All right, let me just get my... We'll let Greg get set up.
Um, our first application is continued since February 25th. David and Mary Ellen Drinkwater are second marriage, waiting to request a special permit in accordance with Section 460.2, which is the Salt Martian Tideland Conservation District. The property owner is currently married.
Good evening, and here's Ed.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morris. I'm a registered engineer with Morris Engineering, representing David and Mary Ellen Drinkwater, the property owners that are here with us tonight. We were before the board last month. What we're here for is we're here for a special permit in accordance with Section 460.2, which is the Salt Martian Tideland Conservation District. The applicant was proposing to construct a two-story detached garage. It's highlighted in orange on the site plan. I believe we had answered all of the board's questions at the last meeting. However, in the regulations, there was a requirement for certified mail to be sent to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. That has been done since the last meeting. I don't believe there are any outstanding comments to address.
Okay. And we never got anything from planning or conservation?
No, we did.
Yeah, just that one saying that they-
Just the two, yeah, just the one memo from each, nothing from the other.
Yeah, that's what I meant, okay. All righty, so, any questions from any member of the board at this point, or comments?
I'm just trying to remember what was the... There were no issues.
I think it was just a matter of getting the letters out.
Okay.
Right, right. Any outstanding comments or questions from the audience on this application? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion? John, do the motion, Ed.
Motion to grant a request for a special permit in accordance with Section 460.2 to rent a two-story detached garage within the Salt Martian Tideland Conservation District for the property located at Seven Barris Lane, according to the map dated 12/2013, drive number 13331.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If anybody's looked at the agenda, we are, for various reasons, going a little bit out of order today. So, the next one we're going to do is the One Ford Place, which was also continued.
In our second application, we're going to begin on February 20th. Charles Aggie, the property that LSP, Porshi Grass Park Relaying, requests a special permit finding and/or any other appropriate legal fee of three grand pursuant to Section 829 5.2 of the Situage Zone and Rite laws and General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, after a tentative nonconforming use of one floor.
Good evening. Mr. Hornberger.
Yes, hi, I'm Bill Orenberger. Unfortunately, Mr. and Mrs. Tan Jimmy are out of state and couldn't be with us tonight, but I have with me Jim Duffy, our architect, and also Ralph Cole, our surveyor's here also. And at the outset of this, I would like to submit to the board some letters of support of the application, which are various neighbors and butters, and I think I've got five copies for everyone. We don't have a presentation board because, in essence, we're not doing anything to the site other than the existing conditions. On the property, which is in the Green Bush District, we have a pre-existing non... I'm putting assessors' map in the applications, a pre-existing nonconforming building in use that's been there since 1850. Presently, and it has a nonconforming setback of approximately 12 feet from countryway. In accordance with this, because of the setback is nonconforming, there's a single-family use in there, but the portion of, because the nonconformity of the setback, it makes the use in that nonconforming also nonconforming. What the proposal here is, is to create, is to create four modest apartments with a total of five bedrooms, an existing four-bedroom house there. The existing parking area that is already there, that is for eight or nine vehicles, which exceeds what is required under the bylaw. And under, and under Section 820, it requires a finding of the board that it should not be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use in the neighborhood. Basically, with the coming of the train, my client's position is, I think there's a real need in the area for smaller, more affordable apartments, as opposed to the large, single-family homes that are there presently. There is a separate access way right off of, right off of Ford Place to the property, and there aren't any new curb cuts or anything else. Any of the work done on here would be strictly, strictly interior work, which Jim submitted some, some plans, he was just showing how the four small apartments would be constructed on this. We think this is a good, we think this is a good use. This is also in Situage Overlake District also, and you could go through the Overlake District permit and also have a commercial use in the first floor, but my clients feel the best utilization of the property is for, you know, four modest apartments. We feel that, because of the nature of the use, it's a resident, it's a residential use. We don't feel it's substantially more detrimental. There literally are no exterior alterations, either might be a light or something put on there. Jim can do all the work inside, make sure it complies with all the building codes, handicap access, accessibility, and things along those lines. And for those reasons, I'll end my presentation right now and answer any questions that myself, Jim, or Ralph can have for the board.
Okay. One question. You said it exceeded the requirements by the bylaw for parking. What are the requirements for the bylaw?
Uh, one per bedroom. Maybe there's a total of, maybe a total of five bedrooms that are proposed here.
That's what I counted, one, two, three, four, five. And the only problem I have is that your, your plan, the existing conditions plan doesn't... It's, it's, it's like a pretty good-sized parking space, but it doesn't lay out the parking spots. That, you know, I would like to see that, to make sure that, you know, it is sufficient with parking. I don't know that you'd, I don't know that you'd have to increase it at all. It doesn't look like you would, but, you know, I don't know.
No, dimensionally, we wouldn't, but if there's a condition in the finding that, that to provide the necessary parking, you know, a minimum of five parking spaces, three of them's a minimum of six parking spaces, is more than adequate. And we can, to the Building Commissioner, prior to getting permits, we can demonstrate to his satisfaction that.
All right. Any questions from the board?
It sounds like you're not doing any work outside the existing footprint and everything. It's all interior petitions, walls moving, plumbing.
Right. Get a residential sprinkler system.
Yep, no, okay, no dormers or anything like that that you're adding, or no? And the same access has been remade for the basement and those type things as well?
Right, there's limited access for the basement now.
Yeah, kind of crawl space type.
Anyone else? Do you guys have anything to add?
No, I just, you know, there, there is a need in this town for legal, affordable apartments.
Always.
For single people, you know, retired people. And it's, where they're not changing the exterior of the house and they're not increasing the bedrooms, I guess it would be my opinion that, and the board can, you know, the board can authorize it, that it would, I would concur that it can be granted.
Is there anyone...
Is there existing four bedrooms or existing five?
Existing four, and it's going to be five bedrooms now.
So, there is one, one additional, but the parking again covers that.
Yes.
And it's on town sewer now?
Yes, it is.
So, you'd just be increasing-
Correct.
-that permit to ask them.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this application? Okay. Do we have a motion? Anthony?
Is this a fine?
I pass it around.
It's like a classic. Is this a fine?
No, it's a special permit. I think it's a special permit.
For young people.
All right. Motion to grant a special permit to allow the conversion of use to five bedrooms pursuant to a plan dated 11514.
Well, I mean, I think it needs to be, no, perhaps, I think we need to change the use because it's a, currently a single-family residence, right?
Yeah, for four, four apartments.
Oh, it's a single family, okay.
Right, right.
Change the use... We'll start again?
Yes.
Two. Motion to grant a special permit to allow a change in use from a single-family residence to a five-bedroom apartment pursuant to the plan dated 11514.
Five bedroom, four apartments.
Five bedrooms, four apartments pursuant to the plan. And do you want to add in the parking conditions?
Right, before, before that, yeah, that...
Subject to-
Middle of the parking.
Yeah. A plan showing striping for five parking spaces.
Can I just make one caveat? It's actually, it's not an asphalt surface, so you might have trouble putting parking spaces, but we could put, like, little things that said, like, spot one, two, three, four, like-
Yeah, I think if you put it on the plan.
Oh, on the plan, okay.
It doesn't have to be marked on the, on the actually, on the, just so we can see the dimensions.
Five.
Five.
Got it.
Right. So, the condition is for the spot shown on the plan, on the plan.
Got it, thank you.
So, subject to a plan showing.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll submit a proposed decision for the boards.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
He's supposed to downhill from here.
We only give you two seats for these guys.
Okay.
I can see if Mr. Maribito's here.
We're backloading our public comment.
Okay.
Keep track of my papers here.
Do we need to bring up?
Yeah, I just put it on the record.
Okay. So, our third application is, this is in Whitney, Trustee of 179 Edward Foster Road, where the line to Whitney, 71st Avenue, requests a special permit and/or any other legal fee of three grand or something, 10.28, 9.58, 9.3, the Situage Zone by law, it would be a lot more than 50 feet of frontage, a lot with more than 50 feet of frontage, two times required, upland.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Orenberger, and I'm here tonight with Susan Whitney, who's here on behalf of her son Ryan, who's out of state on, on business and couldn't, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. Also, we have Paul Maribito here, and I'm going to ask Paul to make a brief presentation to show you what we're up to, then I will cover the bylaw criteria relating to that, and Paul and I will be available to answer any questions, the board, or anyone else may have.
Oh, before we get started, we need, Mr. Lynch would like to put something on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name's Frank Lynch, I live at 155 Edward Foster Road. In abundance of caution, I filed a disclosure that sets forth where I live, how far away I live from the property. Can't even see the property, but I am in the First Cliff neighborhood, and I'm aware that the First Cliff Association has sent a letter in taking a position on this, so I just wanted to be cautious about the fact that people know that I do live on First Cliff as well. I didn't, don't, I see that I'm far enough away so that I don't legally have a conflict, and I don't think I have a conflict, but, and also, I would note that, like, since we're all here, I'm not going to be a voting member on this, but I'm going to participate as a board member, as we usually do, unless anybody objects, and if they do, this is the time to raise it, otherwise I'm just going to proceed.
No.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Does anybody have something to say?
Yes, and Paul, if you just do it in such a way that hopefully you can catch it at least on the TV and most people can see it. Okay. Whatever is, seems to work. Well, he's setting up. I had, I had a question, and apparently I missed the email, I was in court all day today, but there was an issue that one of the objectors brought up about the ownership of the property.
Right.
You want to address that straight out?
Sure, absolutely. We're in the position that the applicant to this, when the application was made, was Susan Whitney, trustee of the trust, whole portion of this, the house and the majority of the property is owned by Ryan. Trust is just actually a nominee trust for Ryan's benefit that was set up for some type of tax purpose, so to avoid any, that was adequate anyhow, but to avoid any ambiguity, we actually deed of the property, so it is all in Ryan's name, and you have the deed that's been filed with the land court.
Okay. So, now, all four parcels that we're talking about-
Correct.
A, B, six, and seven are owned by Ryan Whitney.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
My name is Paul Maribito, from Ross Engineering Company, and here representing the applicant for the project. What I think you do first is to briefly explain to the audience and the board how we arrived at the plan that we submitted to the repetition this evening. Whenever we're asked to look at what the potentialist or any of this property as far as how we could improve it, add to it, create another lot, et cetera, what we do is to look at the zoning by law and a whole host of other regulations, and then we look at the individual site, and we look at the restrictions to the site based upon that individual parcel, because every site is clearly different, and we take into account all the different regulations that apply to one's property. And what we've done is, we started out by looking at the first option. The property that's owned by the applicant is outlined in yellow. One, one option would be to put the existing dwelling on a 23,000-square-foot lot and apply to the zoning board for a special permit for a lot with 50 feet of frontage and 50 feet of lot worth coming in from Edward Foster Road. The dwelling would be located in this area here under this option. And the reason is, is that this is the only available area under the zoning by law to meet the dimensional requirements to place a house in that location. There's another option that we looked at, I call it Option B. And by the way, Option A would require an application to this board, the zoning board. Option B would require an application to the planning board. The purpose of that would be to create a, this is a half a cul-de-sac that would be laid out under the subdivision control law. By doing that, we would create a lot with 60 feet of frontage and 60 feet of lot width, and in this scenario here, the house would still go in this location. The difference is that emergency vehicles would have the ability to turn around in this area here from the edge of pavement here to the edge of the pavement on the opposite side of Edward Foster Road. Currently, I think, as you all know, there's no area for any vehicles to go to the end of the road and turn around using the radio that the fire department and other emergency vehicles require in order to make those turns. Those, those were the two options that we looked at first. What I'd like to do is just show you where we are in the general neighborhood. This is the locus, that's the subject of the application. This is Edward Foster Road, Situage Harbor. This is Drinkwater. And you can see, this is Robert's Drive, and you can see the house lots around us. This, these two lots by far are quite a bit larger than the house lot that you see in the, a neighborhood of First Cliff. So, the final option we put together, the one that we felt is best for the property and the neighborhood, is the subject of the application that we submitted here. What we're asking under this application is to create a 50-foot lot around the existing dwelling, and the lot would go all the way up to the high-water mark, and this is the, this is the lot we're asking the zoning board to approve this evening. There are sewer connections in, in the street that were installed. There's two of them, one, one for a new lot and one for the existing dwelling. I don't believe the dwelling has been hooked up to its sewer connection at this point in time. There's also, there's also some existing easements for utilities going to a dwelling in this location here owned by the, of Butter White. There's also a 12-foot way on the, on the lot owned by Crum in O'Brien that services this house. What they do is they come in from Edward Foster Road and they go into their garage here. This way continues on to an existing easement shown on a land court plan, that this easement continues on to the existing dwelling over here. This dwelling has no frontage on the street, so its only access is through that existing right-of-way over Crum's lot, and the easement over the Whitney property. The planning board has endorsed this plan, we're simply waiting for the approval of the zoning board before they will release that plan for recording. I think with that, I'll end my presentation, open it up for questions.
Do you have something to add?
No, I'll go through the criteria. Would you like me to do that first?
Well, let's get questions answered first. One question I have, and it's, it's going to be a very non-educated question. When you're going down to the water, how, what's the definition of upland?
Upland?
Yeah.
Upland is anything that is not classified as a wetland or a marsh, a pond, a wet meadow. We had our bottomist, Brad Holmes, walked that entire property, you see in blue, and that, that's all lawn right up to the coastal bank there.
The bylaw defines it as it's measured to the high-water mark.
Okay. So, there's no issue the fact that you go down to the beach with being upland?
That's correct.
Okay.
In, in the plan, they'll set up that parcel as all upland. There's, um, just so you know, this, the one portion of Lot A is, this, this portion of Lot A is unregistered land, and this portion here is a land court, a registered land, and I think you may see in the application that was submitted, the owner has been taxed as, this parcel is being taxed and has been taxed as a buildable lot.
Did you do, didn't you start doing that when, when they approved the sewer connection, probably?
No, from, no.
No, before, before that?
It's always been from the outset, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just one point of clarification, though, is it is confusing between registry agreed and land court land, and that's the reason why the numbering of lots is different, because regardless of how the town planning board may number lots, the land court has its specific designation, so it's easier to note showing the plan as the two lots, the land court land and the non-land court land together are a buildable lot, so that's why it's like that.
And what is the square footage, uh, square footages of the two lots that you're proposing?
Well, we're proposing the one lot, which is the subject lot in blue there, and Paul, what's that, 30 what thousand?
This, this blue has 36,089 square feet, that's by adding Lot A and Parcel 6 together.
And that leaves how much on Parcel B?
Parcel B?
Or Lot B and Parcel?
This, um-
20,000.
This portion of B plus Parcel 7 is a total of 40,512 square feet.
And just for, for the audience, what is the requirement of, of the lot to be created then? It's twice the required upland.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're in our free zone, 10,000 square foot requirement.
10,000 square foot. So, you're over three times the amount.
Correct.
Okay. All righty. Do you have any, anything else, and then we can ask, see if any... Let me ask for Neil. You have any comments, Neil, so far?
Um, no, it seems something the board has authorized before, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We could start there, and then we can let Mr. Orenberger do his thing. You have some questions?
I have a question. This question's come up before, and one I'd like to have clarified, and obviously, the boys will like it to their satisfaction. My understanding is, we have the right to authorize a 50-foot frontage lot for the construction of a single-family detached dwelling.
Right.
We're creating a 50-foot frontage lot that already has a detached dwelling constructed upon it.
What that, what that is, Ed, is under, this is the same situation that the board has already acted on both border street, the two lots, and also on Surfside, Surfside Road, and what is on 610.3 of the bylaw? 610.3 of the bylaw permits the, permits the creation of a reduction in lot area as long as it doesn't remain less than the area and dimensions required under the section, which is 610, and this complies with that provision?
I guess that's my question, does it?
That does answer your question, or does not?
No, I guess that is my question, does this comply with the-
610.3 seems to address the issue that you're raising.
Right.
It ties back in that 610.2 would apply to-
Right.
-building a new lot or making the 50-footage frontage lot, the lot that the house is already on.
I know it's been a question we've dealt with before. First, I've never felt it was clarified to a point that it might withstand a contestive body. I just don't know.
Anyone else?
Um, yeah, I, just for clarification, the creation of Lot A is before us today, the creation of Lot B is not, right? That's been approved by the planning board, and we don't have purview over that, correct?
Correct.
That's my understanding as well.
Kind of weird why you wouldn't, I don't understand why they're not done at the same, because essentially, they're done at the same time. By doing one, you're allowing the other.
Well, I can't do one-
Lot B isn't allowed lot under the code, right? It's allowed as a bright.
Correct.
But not, but not if you, if we don't allow Lot A to be created. If we don't allow Lot A to be created, Lot B doesn't have the land to be created.
Right. They could make Lot A a non-buildable lot, couldn't they? Yeah.
A lot is a built-
Well, yes, therein lies the rub.
That's exactly what the problem is, you can't create a non-buildable lot. I mean, that's, it wouldn't be a dilemma if the, if the argument that you can't create a lot, a 50-foot frontage lot on which a structure exists.
Right.
Then it isn't a dilemma. Once we have a structure on the property, then it becomes a dilemma of time, maybe it's just a dilemma of timing, but-
Well, the only point I make to that, Ed, was harkening back to what Paul discussed, is, I, you know, I feel the reason we discussed is 610.3 covers this, because, believe me, that, you know, the thing is crystal clear is Option, Option A that Paul showed there is the Lot B there. You make that one the 50-foot frontage, but, you know, the Whitney's cognizant of the fact is, the feeling that a house, if you, if you look at where Lot B is, because of the right-of-way and utility easements, a fairly modest building area there, which is, again, at least in their opinion, is, you know, you know, is an area there. Their current plan is for Sue and her husband Dan to build a retirement home there, and if he did do, that is a 50-foot lot, the, the parcel where this would be placed would be behind Mr. O'Brien and in front of Mr. White, and as far as I know, and even though I know views on a protectable interest, but they are cognizant as trying to be good neighbors that they didn't want to place a house there, and so that is why they, as Paul said, they thought that this was the best way. And so, that is why they, as Paul said, they thought that this was the best way.
Well, another aspect that comes into play in the, in the siting of the two lots, or the, or the planning of the two lots, is the flood zone. You have a total different set of, of construction standards on...
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
On the lot as proposed versus the 50-foot frontage lot, which we could approve without even entering into this question. And I know we have had this problem before, you mentioned Surfside, and I think when it was done, there was a, my recollection is there was some question of whether it was the appropriate thing to do.
Well, it was also done before then for two lots on border street in Citewood. But the, the other criteria which Paul didn't mention is, because again, the intention here is, by creating this 50-foot lot with the existing house on it, under the bylaw, it limits that, so only a single-family dwelling can be there. That has more than adequate frontage to have a two-family or two-unit condominium on there. And, and by doing this, it, it permanently makes a situation so that won't occur. Because that, you know, that, if this is, if this, if the board feels this is a situation to be approved, then that locks that in, so, you know, in the future, that could not be a two-family dwelling.
And you also couldn't build on Parcel Six or Seven. I mean, I know they're going to be subsumed in the ultimate lots, but there would be no dwelling there.
Correct.
Could I just follow up on a comment? Can you comment? Thank you. First of all, the, on Lot B, the buildable area because of all these easements, is this area here. That's relatively small. The side yard setback is only eight feet, which would be about in here, but because of the easements, it's actually pushed back to here. This isn't a problem for the applicant, because the home they were proposing to build here would be relatively small. It's relative to, if, if there was a house here, the flood plain, isn't a problem. We could have a, a full foundation, concrete, it would have breakout panels in it, because it'd be in an AE zone. This, this line is, as it's scaled off the map, the current zone was nine. Elevation nine is down here, but when you digitize this line off the FEMA map, it's, it's in this area here. But if we were to do the engineering, we would go by the actual ground elevation, which would be down in here. But still, and under the new maps, I think that the new contour is 14 and 15, which comes through here. You can still put the house in an AE zone or flood zone, that, that's not an issue. As Bill mentioned, we didn't want to put a house between the O'Brien and the White. And where this is going to be a small one anyway, this would be best fit.
You keep saying small, do you haven't anticipated square footage of that?
No, they haven't designed it, but when they say small, because of the setbacks there and the easements, you know, that, that...
Yeah, it's a pretty big footprint.
Available areas that reduce.
Yeah.
Right, it would be allowed to be larger.
Right.
Without the, at the easement.
All right. Any other questions of the board? All right, let's open it up to the audience. Mr. Hayes, Attorney Hayes.
Good evening, I'm Michael Hayes. And I represent two of the Abutts, the Planneries and the Michos, they live directly across the street. And, and that's going to make it perfectly fair that they are completely in favor of the Whitney's and anybody else in town doing whatever the bylaw permits, and they support that. But I've gone over the plans, and, and I've discussed this with Bill as well. And I do have two, just two questions really for the board. And the first is whether you need to make a determination that the area encompassed in those easements can be calculated for the gross area. And the reason I ask that is that those are access easements to the westerly, the house to the west of the, of the locus. And those easements were easements for ingress and egress, and for all purposes of which roads are commonly used in the town of Citewood. So, I would respectfully suggest that the board needs to determine whether that square footage can be used in lot area calculation. And I'll, Bill, I, I've discussed this with Bill, and...
Right.
I can answer that whenever.
And Bill, he's got, he has an answer to that, but then I have another question.
Okay, so we'll go to the answer.
Yeah, I asked Paul, first, two things. On the, respectfully disagree with Mike. This is not a paper street, these are, these are private easements. But even assuming for a moment that was the case, the area of the access easement that is on Lot B, which isn't the subject of this, is approximately 300 square feet, and we have 20,900 square feet, and 10,000 is required in the zone. And the area on Lot A, Lot A here, or which is on Parcel Six behind it, Lot A, is a few thousand square feet, but we have 36,000 square feet. If we lost 26,000 square feet, it still works.
That was actually going to be my question, if you, if you assume, and, and I don't know whether, I mean, it's an interesting question, I hadn't considered it, but if you assume Mike is right...
Yeah.
If, my question was subtract it, and what do we have? Subtract it, and we have still more than double the other.
Yeah. You still got a ton, yeah.
If I could follow up on that, this, this is the land court plan that was issued January 4th into this year. The petitioner's plan was done in September of 2000. What, what it shows is the property here. This is the Whitney lot, this is the existing house, that's the subject of the application, and this is the White house. This, this was owned by one owner, and the estate divided to, divided the property up. What they did for this subdivision plan essentially was to put this line down here, down here, and, and put this Parcel Six for this property, and parcel land went with the White house. And if you look at this plan, this is 2002, it was recorded in 2014, January this year, this plan shows this area right here, under Parcel Six. It shows that as an easement, it's not a way. This plan, this plan here, calls it a 12-foot way. But what Billy's explained to you is that normally ways are created in a subdivision control wall, and this is not a way, it's an easement, it's shown on the land court plan. And this, this portion, which is called a 12-foot way, goes through the O'Burton property. The Whites use it, but the parcel portion here, it's clearly an easement, it's shown on the land court plan. It was also shown on the land court petitioner's plan, so submitted prior to this, it's shown as an easement as well.
But the end result is, even if you just, again, subtracted all of that...
We have more than enough here, right. This, you know, this Parcel Six and A gets 36,089 square feet, and we need 20,000.
Neil.
Yeah, the, the bylaw basically says that...
Where are you at in the bylaw?
I'm at 610-1A.
Okay.
I think that's where I just saw it.
610-1A, okay.
Um, no, yeah, exclusive of any, yeah, exclusive of any part of said lot within the line of a street or way. Then our definition of a street or way is any street or way providing legally sufficient frontage for a division of land, under the requirements of general laws, chapter 41, section 81L. In other words, no one could use those ways for frontage, therefore, they're not ways that are regulated and, and under the dimensional prohibit, uh, section.
Hayes, next point.
Well, just, and again, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anything Julie, or Neil, or Paul says, but at the same time, I would have a concern that the, I guess it's the White property, since they have the benefit of that easement, could they go to the planning board with the plan and ask the bill to roll? And would that affect this, this proposal?
Well, the only thing I'm going to say is, I can't, I'm not going to speculate on that, because they, they haven't done that. And when they go do that, I guess everybody will find out what the answer to that question is.
My second point is this, and again, the planners aren't trying to stop this project, but they do have a concern, and their concern is what happens down the road while Lot One, combined with Lot Seven, is for a single family and...
Wait a minute, Lot, well, let's, let's talk about Lot A or Lot B?
The existing house.
Okay, so that's Lot A?
Lot A and Lot Six.
Okay.
Parcel Six. And while that, the bylaw would not permit a duplex, it, it, for two condominiums, there's nothing to prevent an accessory dwelling from being built. And there would also nothing to prevent the other lot that's already approved with the planning board to have an accessory dwelling. So, there is conceivably the possibility that there could be four structures on these two lots. Granted, that would be a special permit. Granted, it's probably, it's not, it's very easy, but it, but it is a, it's a concern that the Flanneries and the Michos have, and I've discussed this with Bill also. And, uh, again, this being a special permit, it would be up to the board to, to make any conditions that they thought would be beneficial to the neighborhood. So, that is, that is, that is the other concern of the Michos and the...
The only thing with, with due respect with Mike, is, under our bylaw, it sets out, first of all, saying about this, about this lot of land, we said about any lot of land in the town of Citewood. And so, there's, there's nothing unique about that, and that's why the planning board is a special permit granting authority on that, which has its own set of rules and regulations and whatever. And, and just, you know, our opinion is, I think it would be unfair for one special grant, permit granting authority to usurp the role of another special grant, permit granting authority.
Can we even do that? I'm not sure we can.
I don't think you can.
I'm not sure we can.
Yeah.
Unless you're, unless you're, unless your client wants to get that right up at this point.
Well, I mean, there are provisions in the bylaw where the Board of Appeals can impose conditions on special permits. Sorry.
Absolutely. I don't disagree with you, but I'm not sure this is the type that we can.
Well, it's a, I, I, I think you can do just about anything you want, because the question is, do you want to, and is it appropriate?
Well, sorry, just with all due respect, with Mike said, yes, you, you can condition these things. But I don't think from a, well, from a, you know, just from an equity standpoint, you have one special grant, permit granting authority usurping the rule of another special permit granting authority. That was one of the reasons why with, with the recertification of the zoning bylaw in 2010, was actually to look at some of these provisions where there appeared to be some conflicting provisions between planning board and zoning board of appeals, and also the changing of the special permit, permit granting authority, for instance, of the zoning board of appeals in the case of flood plain and watershed protection areas, just to try to get some consistency here. I'm all set.
Anyone else, please? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Walter Sullivan, I'm a attorney representing two of the most Draper Butters, the Whites who live at 181, and Edward Foster Road, and the O'Bryans who live at 185. And we have submitted a letter in opposition prior to this, well. Chiefly, our concern is that by creating this, this parcel, they're making the pre-existing structure more non-conforming, in contrary to section E50 of your bylaw. It's more detrimental to the neighborhood. While there is precedent of this order on 50-foot lots under this section of the bylaw, on, which Bill alluded to, in both of those situations on border street and Surfside, the, the lot that was left was conforming in all respects to your zoning. Here, this lot now is more, substantially more non-conforming, because the existing structure is now only eight feet from the White property. So, it's, it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's harmful, and, and for that reason, we would submit that the board should deny it and find, I mean, the second section that they seek to leave from the bylaw. But compared to the parcel that they are combining, Lot Parcel Six, my client has lived here since 2000, and he had been adamant that Parcel Six was a wetland, but we noticed on the plan, and Mr. Mirabito certified that that was not the case. Today, my client reached out to an engineer at Millbrook Survey, who indicated that they had flagged it in 2000, that there are wetlands, been pummeling a significant part of that parcel, and they sent over to us today a reported land court plan that shows that there's wetlands, that was done by Coorsley and Whitney and Millbrook Survey. This was only issued to me about 20 minutes ago. Mr. Orenberger hasn't had a moment to see it, but I have five copies of the plan. Our client submits that you cannot use wetlands to combine the frontage of this lot, and that shouldn't be, that's not permissible in the bylaw.
Let's take a look at the plan.
Attorney Sullivan, so that if your client, Mr. White, was, was this prior to or in conjunction with the, his being informed that it was wetlands, to his deeding the parcel that was described as Parcel Six?
So, if you look at that plan there, you'll see where the flagging was down there, where the lot was, that's the parcel. So, the flagging goes from our current parcel across what is being called now Parcel Six, but I think is actually called Parcel B in that plan there.
Yes.
Also, there's a note there that says Parcel B shall be not buildable. When it gets combined, it's B and C, which are the two registered pieces of land that go to low water, and then D. So, you'll, I think it's O5, I don't have it in front of me.
Parcels, Parcels B, C, and D, as shown, are not buildable. Parcel B is to be combined with Parcel A, Parcel C to be combined with B.
I don't mean to jump in, but this, the plan's not signed or sealed.
I, I do have the stamp line, so I applaud that for that. I can show it to them.
We're kind of looking at it.
Yeah, we're looking at something that's 14 years old.
Well, can I, can I answer one?
Yeah.
Yeah, just two questions, just to address Walter's first thing about, I don't understand the dwelling on Parcel A meets all the town's existing dimensional zoning setback requirements. So, to say that you're making it more non-conforming simply is incorrect. I want you to point out to me how that dwelling is not meeting the existing requirements of the bylaw, because it does. That's question number one.
Is it more pre-existing non-conforming?
Yeah, yeah, those, those things are pre-existing non-conforming, not drawing any line near themselves, it's irrelevant.
We can show you the stamp copy.
Oh, can we stick with, if we could, if you can, I'll leave here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to stick with that issue to clarify that one first.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Well, I was, I was going to raise that question myself. The existing dwelling, Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan, you're not suggesting the existing dwelling is non-conforming and as it's too close to lot lines, but the existing structure as shown on the plan, and existing garage barn as shown on the plan, are...
That's correct, I apologize if I misstated that. I'm saying that by taking a parcel away, you're intensifying the non-conformities of the structures on the planning system.
But they would have, and we have, in the situations where we have done this sort of thing, we've required that structures that are too close to lot lines are in some cases actually crossing lot lines, be removed as part of the condition of doing it, so...
But, but the only point I'd make there is, again, that there's an intensification of that use. There is an intensification of that use, it's exactly that lot line, the, the area where it is a pre-existing non-conforming use is not being intensified at all.
Yeah, you're not changing it.
No, not even changing it. And, and Paul would like to speak to the, I, I think, I think this thing, even putting aside the fact that it is signed and sealed, I think that you're misinterpreting what that says, and I think Paul will, yeah.
This, this, this is the, this is the, this is the property line, it shows the wetlands over here. So, there, there are no wetlands on that section. Parcel Six is all lawn.
If I may speak, that's, I apologize if it's simply not true. So, we watched, we watched the fridges fill the land in, and we have photographs of the activity, if that's at all important, right? So, there is a, on my parcel, on one of our CONCON filings, the flagging does run parallel to that line, because at that point in time, that was the end of our filing. But when property was flagged for the original subdivision of the land... But when property was flagged for the original subdivision, the land court to switch one parcel to the next, the wetlands do clearly run through what at that point in time was called parcel B.
Yeah. I mean, I'm having a little hard time, don't read maps. But so, what we, so the existing dwelling, that's marked 179, that's 179. And it looks right in front of it, headed towards the beach, it's flagged wetlands.
Between here...
Right.
That, this is a wetland.
All right, so how do we...
One of these is wrong, clarify those, I understand.
Well, if they were wetlands at one time, they don't, wetlands don't usually go away unless they're, unless they're manipulation.
This is right here.
This plan right here.
Here's 179, Paul, and this is 179.
This is the plan, this is the same plan. And what you see, this is what they call a petitioner's plan. This is the sign on the planning board. This is the same plan. You see, the land court took it in in February of '01. Land board endorsed it on September 21st, 2000.
And it shows the wetlands, it shows wetlands right there.
It shows wetlands. This is, this is 14 years ago. What I'm saying is...
You're suggesting the wetlands went away?
I don't know what happened to them. I didn't, I, I didn't do this flagging.
I understand.
But when we were out the last fall, there's planters in there, which is showing one of the plants. There's, there's planter islands in here, and it was all lawn up to the problem of the beach. So I, I, I did see this plan, and I had Brad Holmes come out, and he did some trial test pits, and he verified that this was upland.
And where's, where's that, the results of that? Is that in front of us?
What's that?
His report?
Only in, only in as much as Mr. Maravito's plan.
The reason I, I had him do that was because I had to determine whether it was wetland or upland, because your zoning bylaw requires you separate wetland from upland. He went out and walked the site, and I was there with him, he did several test pits, and he determined there was no wetland on parcel six.
We have to hold that down, uh, a day, a little issue on wetlands. I'm having a hard time with this one, because you, you know, I mean, I find you, you know me, I absolutely think you're the most, you know, great integrity, but if you're asking this board, we're looking at maps that, I mean, even in this one, it shows that they're wetlands, and you said this is a land court file, and you're saying that your guy said that there was no wetlands, but yet we don't, I mean, I would like to see something from him. Why is he not here?
Because no one raised the issue until thirty seconds ago.
Well, it's raised now, I guess, yeah.
Do you need to be here?
Yeah. I think you might need to be here.
When I started the project, I, I had this plan, because we surveyed the property a couple of years ago, and then when we decided to file it, I decided, well, it was here, and I said, this is all lawn, can you come out and check this and see if there's wetlands down there?
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
Just to clarify, someone else, as a, as a registered surveyor, you're a qualified soils expert. All right, and you stamped the plan and you certified it.
And I stamped it, we surveyed it, and certified it was being upland.
Right, and that's statute.
I know, but we also have a stamped plan that says it's wetlands. So I'm, I'm, I'm not able, I personally am not able to resolve it, you know, looking at it.
Was that on the PDF you're talking about?
We have another one here. The one that Mr. Maravito just gave, it's stamped by everyone.
Yeah.
We can also provide the original report that was done when the land was...
Okay, first of all, I'm sorry, Mr. White, it's just, you know, we got to keep order, so you can see where we're headed. So give us a minute here. Neil, do you have any comment on, on where we're headed here?
Well, just drawing from my experience as the acting conservation agent for Haringburg Meadow, there are certain statute of limitations on, you know, things that, on wetlands violations.
Okay.
So I don't know what the situation is here, but, you know, if there's upland there presently, and it's beyond the statute of limitations, I mean, I don't know what the board can do about that.
Which is, I don't know what the statute of limitation is on, on destruction of wetlands.
I think I know, I'd rather not testify to what it is until I get some firm facts.
All right.
It's, it goes to, to a subsequent owner, I think there's a certain period of time.
Is it, under the, under the order conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act, is it three, there's a three-year statute of limitation?
Yeah, that's my recollection.
Okay. Well, I see it's something that, I, I personally am not prepared to resolve this particular issue tonight. Do the other board members feel differently? I mean, I would, I think I would like to see something more developed on that.
If you look at that upper wetland line, right here...
You're, you're pointing to...
It's right here, see a wetland?
Flag three on, on the land court file, filed, yeah.
This is upland from here...
Right.
Down to this line...
Yes.
Registered land.
Yes.
This area in here is about 8,000 square feet. On the plan you have here for parcel A, it has 15,900 square feet.
In parcel A.
So what you need is 1,100 square feet more upland to make that a 20,000 square foot lot. And you can see from here, between here and here, even if you, you've got about 8,000 square feet, so you're still way over 20,000 square feet of upland.
This is also upland down here.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, that's the wetland area.
Okay.
Top of the bank. But also the parcel, those two, you cut out of it this way, so it's even more...
It is small, but I mean, just a question, it would seem to me, it's just a question of, is there enough land here? And if there's two pieces of evidence before us that one shows is wetlands, one shows is not, and I recognize that you're qualified and licensed to certify, and that you've had a consultant come and look at it, but I know, just out of the blue, we've got some additional evidence before us. It just needs to be resolved so we know what we're talking about.
The only thing we say, Ed, is even assuming for a minute that we're 100% wrong, which we're not, there's still more than 8,000 square feet more of upland than what is necessary for this petition.
I guess I would rather have, you know, rather, rather than be estimated, I know Paul can measure this stuff and come back with, you know, calculations, you know, I mean, I think to be fair, I want to make, I want to make the right call on this one, but I'm not sure I'm, I'm ready to make the call on this one. It's stuff that we've, you know, we've just been handed, you've just been handed. We've got somebody saying wetlands, and somebody saying no wetlands. This says the wetlands were there in 2001, it's 2014. I don't, I don't know. I mean, if there's a three-year statute of limitation, would anybody testify how long it existed as a law? I don't know.
Well, let me, let me ask the question. So we have, we have a licensed wetland scientist that certified this. So assuming that, we come back here, and he certifies this, and, and someone else certified something different, what do you do? We already have the certification.
Well, we're going to have to make a decision, because they can't both be right, I suppose, right? One of them, I mean, even if they say, they say totally opposite things, I don't know. I don't know. We're going to have to make a decision on which one we believe.
Well, the other thing now we have in front of us, the more recent plan was certified as uplands, this other plan being...
Yeah, so you're suggesting if there was another expert that disagreed with the current interpretation of the property?
Well, what I'm, what I'm just saying is, you're throwing potentially, not intentionally, so throwing us into an endless loop, there's no way out of.
Well, I guess what would come into play then is a plan that would show that you had enough area, even excluding the wetlands, would be very helpful in that situation.
But I think what they're saying now around the wetlands, as it stands now, whether, so there's no, nothing to prove otherwise.
Right.
They're...
We can, we can avoid the issue, though, if there's, if the disputed, if the disputed area of wetlands is not enough to reduce the lot size.
Well, it's, yeah, that's, that avoids the whole thing.
If we can see, if we can see that plan, I think, you know, acknowledging that you're not conceding that these areas are actually wetlands, that would certainly be helpful, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there's two issues. One thing I'd throw for the board's consideration is, why is the condition in the plan, a condition in the approval that, that Neil cannot issue a building permit on this unless, unless certified there's 20,000, at least 20,000 square feet of upland? The only reason I say that is, I'm, the reason why we're here tonight, I'm away, I'm out of country next time, I won't be back here till the end of May, if I mean, for the next board decision, so that's the only, I don't mean to be recalcitrant, recalcitrant, Ed.
He actually does okay when you're not here.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, as far as the condition, as far as the condition goes, if that's the only issue, I, I think from looking at the plan there, it's, well, whatever, I, I think it's abundantly clear, this isn't like it's off, it's, it's 8,000 square feet over, minimally, even assuming that it was...
But Grant, what you're saying on the lot parcel that is before us, but if the, if the question comes into about lot that's before us, even though you may be able to overcome that objection on lot A, lot B and parcel seven together, what portion, if there is a portion of parcel seven that can be identified as wetlands, then does lot B plus seven meet the requirements necessary for its creation?
Yeah, but on the other hand, Ed, is that's not the subject of this, and if it doesn't meet it, then that's an unbuildable lot.
I understand that.
Right.
But that may, I understand that, but that also may put your client in a situation of wishing to attack this in a different way. Again, this is new evidence, and I'm not challenging, I understand that, I just would think it would seem to, it would seem to be to your advantage that we clarify it, even if we identify it as disputed in our testimony, and take that portion of the land out of the equation for discussion without conceding it to be wetlands.
Understood, and I appreciate the board's concern. I guess, and will, will accede to the board's wishes, just a little chagrin that we, myself, been ongoing conversations over the past few days, and if we told that, oh, by the way, five minutes ago, we discovered this, if, if anyone had told us an hour ago, Paul could address this adequately, so it appears to me it's more than a coincidence.
Well, trust, trust me, I'm, I'm never pleased with having, being surprised. I'm always comfortable when a hearing comes before us, and all parties involved have had a chance to communicate and discuss their issues, as it sounded like, you and Mr., you and Attorney Hayes had talked about his concerns, and you each had, but sometimes things do come up at the last minute and...
Okay, so can I ask a question with board? Can we, can we proceed and finish the rest of the testimony? And because from, from the board's stand, because I'm the one that's conversant with this, and limit the scope of discussion for the next hearing to this wetland issue?
Well, I personally would be happy to do that. I, but what's, you know...
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, and then...
So are there any other questions, at least?
Right, right. So we could put this issue aside.
Exactly.
Know what you need to do, the, you know, the objectors know what they need to do, and...
And our concern would be that, that you're able to identify that there is sufficient upland in both A and B. I would like to see what you don't want us to take action, and then have your client in a position of not being able to further subdivide the land.
Side, Ed? Under B, we only need 10,000 square feet, that's 20,000.
I understand.
They don't, they don't even need seven.
Right, because it's not a foot to foot.
Exactly.
Mr. Sullivan, do you need this back?
No, we can submit it.
Okay.
We do need this phone back, though.
Absolutely.
I like that internet they have.
The phone, yeah. Is it a recent item? Did we all get one?
Yeah, I think that it'd be, it'd be great to get the signed copy of that.
Sarah, I think, can I, just, this is the same plan you had.
Okay.
This is dated 2006, revision dated '07, about seven years ago.
Okay.
These pictures were taken last fall.
I know it, I have walked down it many times.
This is the area that they're talking about. And this area here, it shows a wetland, you can see it's, it's, it's all lawn in this area. And I'm not talking on the word about this.
Okay. And just so the audience understands what we're doing, you've been listening to the sort of discussion regarding wetlands versus uplands. That particular issue is getting put on hold until the next meeting. You're going to let Mr. DeLisi handle it? Maybe we like him better.
He's probably a much more eloquent individual.
It is all right. So what we'd like to do, though, is finish other, you know, testimony and information about the property and other objections, but again, next time when we come, the only issue that we'll be talking about is the wetlands issue, wetlands versus uplands. Yes, ma'am?
Carol Fitzgibbon, the author of the letter that you received from Forest Cliff Association.
Yes.
And perhaps you could partly clarify a few things, not only for you, but for also other members here. My understanding that Forest Cliff is in an acre, 100 square foot, 100 feet across, in a 10,000 square foot area. And then you have the section where you can come in and ask for a special permit for 50 feet, right?
Correct.
My confusion is, is that under the 50-foot provision, and this is what I'm reading from, that the board automatically, when the language says shall be permissible, that if you come in and you satisfy certain conditions under that statute, the board will automatically grant it, even though it's a deviation from the 100 foot of the 10,000 square feet, and even if it does have a negative effect on the neighborhood, in the sense that one of our main concerns is that this is a precedent, that other people don't come in and do the same thing, and start waking up lots, and there's already a property there. This isn't a case where there's, and they're trying to divide it, make it smaller, they have 150 feet across already. So I would think that would still be a concern of the zoning board, regardless of whether a petitioner comes in and satisfies all other elements. Am I wrong?
Yes.
There you go, okay.
We still have to decide that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There is, it is still discretionary. I guess I would say, you know, probably more often than not, they get granted, but we take everything into consideration when we are granting these applications. And which is why I assume you guys are here to, you know, other people are here to talk about the effect of the neighborhood. That is something that we will take into consideration, and we want to hear from you on. So if you have something to say about that, you know, some...
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
The 50-foot frontage bylaw was put in place for a very good reason. A lot of properties were large with frontage on the street, but not sufficient frontage for a second house on the street, but a lot of backland. And it allowed for people to commit unusually large portions of land, double the lot size, to the building of another home, without having to take down existing houses, without having to subject their land to subdivision control, without allowing for development, without as dense development as is possible under subdivision control. Sometimes by granting a 50-foot frontage lot, we may take a parcel of land that might have three, four, five dwellings on it, and commit it to only two in perpetuity. It's a good, that's part of the reason why it says it can't be further subdivided. So in this case, I don't, I'm not an engineer, and there's not a huge amount of land here, but taking down the existing structure, we already saw the possibility of a cul-de-sac and getting 60-foot frontage on a, on a curve, it's possible that maybe there'd be a way to get three houses in here, or two duplexes, or something else. So this is really a low-density option. It's not that there's no other option. This is a simple low-density option. So in, to some degree, 50-foot frontage can be very positive for a neighborhood. It's not necessarily a negative idea. Yes, it does allow for some development, but there's development potential here outside of 50-foot frontage proposal.
And this, just to add on to that, this would lock out the future development that is possible now, once they commit to this plan, there's, there's not going to be, you can't build a condominium back there, you can't further subdivide the lot.
But that's just for that piece of property. That doesn't, that sets a precedent for anyone else up on Forest Cliff who has land that can be divided that way, and therefore it would make it more and more dense, and we're already at the most dense. The... it would make it more and more dense, and we're already at the most dense, the 10,000 square feet is the most dense in Situate, am I right? Is that right? It's, we're in A3, so A1 and A2 requirements are much bigger.
We have a lot of houses at 5,000 square feet.
We have pre-existing 5,000.
Those are pre-existing, but I'm just saying.
But they're large areas.
For a brand-new dwelling, R3 is the lowest density, lowest amount of dimensional area.
So for a brand-new building, the least it could be is 10,000 square feet.
Right, but these are going to be 36 and 20-some.
Also, your concern about other properties on First Cliff, and I'm guessing Mr. Maravito's getting up to show us this, you have to have 150 foot on a way to, to be able to carve out the 100-foot parcel and a 50-foot parcel. I'm not sure that there's a lot of houses, a lot of properties on First Cliff that have 150 foot on a way. I, without analyzing it, I don't know, but, and then they have to, and then in addition to that, they have to have three times the building, because the 50-foot frontage has to have twice the lot area, so you have to have the potential for three building lots and 150 foot on a way in order to do this.
As mayor folks, for the next meeting, Paul will look at how many 30,000 square foot upland lots are above with 150 feet of front there on First Cliff?
I would, I guess it's very few.
Yeah, I think you got, because even Mr., even Mr. White, who has a large lot here, has zero frontage, so his lot doesn't even qualify.
I'm guessing.
You don't have any?
I'm guessing the Michelle property may, but it, but it's.
You can tell by looking at the map. I've done a lot of work on the cliff in 40 years, and there's nothing up there I don't worry about, has 150 feet of frontage and 30,000 square feet of upland. Roberts Drive and Sunset Road, these subdivisions aren't that old, this is Sunset Road, we're 10,000 square foot lots off of it, Roberts Drive is the same, you got Conroy Terrace, there's one here at 40, 10,000 square feet, that, he's got, he's got more than 100 feet of frontage here, but if you look at the rest of the lots, this is the Hawthorne property, they only got 25 feet of frontage here, they got plenty of land here, but all of these other lots are all maxed out. I know this is a two-family dwelling here that was recently built, that's a single family, a single family, these lots are 20,000, 15,000 square feet, these two lots combined, if you, if you take into account the entire property they own, there's a total of, a total of 56,600 square feet. So if you're going to build 10,000 square foot lots, I'd have to lay them out, but I've got 50,000 square feet of plywood, 10,000 square feet, you'd have the land area for five houses, but it doesn't mean you couldn't get five, but the land area is there.
You have to take, take land for the way to.
And again, when Mrs. Wood purchases a property, she's been taxed as a single-family home lot.
Does that help?
Yes. Sure.
I guess my question would be, is the.
Oh, no, you.
Oh, sorry, Justin Mueller, I live at 169 Edward Foster Road. I guess my concern is that this is ultimately tied to the wetlands question, if the board is using its prerogative to divide this now and alleviate the fact that it may become all these own properties, or more than two that are being proposed as a way to eliminate congestion versus increase it, if that, all that land that we were talking about, which I didn't, I wasn't able to see all the lines and where they are, but if that is in fact wetland, then that really is not part of 56,600 square feet we're talking about.
I guess I'm not sure, I don't think I understand your question.
Okay, my question is, is that, this is, is this tied to the wetlands question? If the board is going to grant this as a way to alleviate congestion rather than the potential of increasing it, if it were to be broken into five lots because it's 50,000 square feet, if that's more than half of it's wetlands, then it's not 56,000.
Well, it still is, it's just that there is a certain percentage of wetlands, it's still that, but it's not all uplands.
It's not identified as wetlands right now before us, that's in question, but even if it were identified, to the extent that the other plan that we were shown from 2001, there would still be sufficient uplands here to perhaps get three house lots out of. I mean, again, it's, as Mr. Maravito was saying, even though you have 5,000, 50,000 square feet, you can't get five lots out of it, because you have to take some to get right away, to, get a way to get to those, to have access and frontage and other things, so I don't think, you'd be hard-pressed to get more than three, I think, under any circumstances, but I don't know, I mean, some, there's all sorts of creative ways to do it, there's common drives, there's other things like that, so I, this is a low-density development option, no matter how you cut it.
Anyone else? Okay, move to continue?
Yeah, I was just gonna walk very quickly through the 950.3 if we're, if we're, just to put it on the record, just in case, because next time I think we're gonna constrain this to a discussion of wetlands issues.
Okay.
And the, under the special permit criteria, you have to comply with 950.3, and I agree, all these we do comply with, a specific size appropriate location for the use of structure. I think it's a, it's a low-density use of this property, and by having a 50-foot lot it ensures in perpetuity, it would be a single-family home, and as Mr. Tibbetts pointed out, it couldn't be further divided to prevent any other development. The use of development adversely affect the neighborhood. Again, we're talking one house on what is probably the largest developable parcel on, on First Cliff, so it's not multiple homes that are being suggested. There's no undue nuisance or serious hazard of vehicles, pedestrians, as a result of the proposed use of structure, same reason, a single-family home, adequate and appropriate facilities provided to ensure proper operation of the proposed use and structure. My client's already paying two sewer beddements, already playing the town of Situate for two buildable lots, and there isn't any significant impact on any public water supply. And again, it's gonna be serviced by municipal water, but it's a single, single fam, single-family, existing single-family home that already is serviced by water, and that's it.
All right, Paul?
Could you say one thing for the benefit of the people in the audience? Lot A, as we mentioned, has to be issued by, the zoning board would approve this under a special permit, and part of the special permit requirement in the zoning bylaw says, and there's a note on the plan, it says Lot A is to be approved by the Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 610-2B of the Situate zoning bylaw. Said lot may not be further subdivided, and a deed restriction for this requirement shall be recorded in the public county registry of deeds accordingly. What that means is, when they record the special permit, there's a deed restriction that says this area in blue can never be subdivided, you can't take land away from it. What that does, it forces this lot to stay exactly the way it is. And it's, and again, you can only have a single-family house on a lot that's at least twice the size of what's required in the rest of the neighborhood, so, and Mr. Tibbetts said this is a fairly low-density project compared to what could.
All right, so, continue.
Do you want to just make clear what we're asking?
Yes.
Next week, or next?
Will we not, we will not, will we not have discussion about other matters?
Correct.
So anyone who here wants to speak to other matters should speak now.
Right, and I asked that. So, so the next, the next meeting, we'll be dealing with the wetlands issues only. I would ask that, any objections, and any maps, and even from the applicant?
Right.
Try to get us everything a week in, you know, at least five days in advance. This is a little bit different, and it, and it may take us a little bit longer to, you know, digest it, so as much time as we can get in advance is really very much appreciated.
Can I ask the board's intelligence, Sue would just like to make a statement on behalf of Ryan, since we're not gonna be addressing it next week.
Certainly, I have to read it, because I'm nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous.
I'm here to represent my son, Ryan, who's sorry he couldn't be here tonight. His work takes him out of state for most of the year, so he has asked me to say a few words about his ownership of 179 Edward Foster Road, and our intentions as a family going forward. Ryan grew up in Situate, our family has lived here for 30 years, we love, we appreciate, value the natural beauty and historical charm of our town and First Cliff in particular. When Ryan decided to purchase the property, it was because he fell in love with the lawns and the gardens, and he envisioned raising his family there someday. We understand that Ryan's property is unique, and that is one of the largest lots on the cliff, we are very sensitive to the fact that its size and history make it important to the neighborhood. We would like everyone to know that preserving the integrity and charm of 179 Edward Foster Road is a priority for us. Since purchasing it in 2008, we have demonstrated this priority by carefully maintaining the house, the barn, the extensive lawns, and beautiful gardens at the, at great expense and to the benefit of all. We have taken much time and given careful thought and consideration as to the best way to make improvements to the property, we will meet, that will meet our family's needs while preserving the character of the cliff. We believe our application represents the most appropriate use of the land, and if approved, each lot will be larger than most of the properties that exist in the neighborhood today. As for the future, it's my husband's and my intention to design a retirement home that will fit in with the character and charm of the other lovely homes in the area, and retain as much space, light, and tranquility as possible. In all the years we've lived in Situate, we've demonstrated ourselves to be responsible property owners and considerate neighbors. We believe our home would not create an undue nuisance, be a hazard, or attract crowds, nor adversely affect the neighborhood in any way. We also feel, if our plans are denied, that is unlikely that any future owners of 179 Edward Foster Road would be as conservative in their development plans, or be as sensitive to the importance of maintaining the character of the cliff. Thank you.
You're welcome, well said, thank you. Sir?
Yes, I'm Sean Flannery, we own the properties at 180 Edward Foster Road and 178 Edward Foster Road. My question to the board is, we've heard some representations about modest-sized home being built in a lot, or whatever, but my question to you is, what, are there, are there any representations or any limitations other than, than the standard ones that go along with these lots at this time?
I asked the question if they, and they said they have not designed the house, so.
So, so does that then mean that, that, I would assume that means that they could build to the maximum permitted under, under the law, right?
Yes.
So there's nothing that would bind them to representations?
No.
And difficult for us to do anything that way, because the property that we're creating by our action already has the building on it. The property that the new structure we built on is a conforming lot.
That was created by the planning board.
And, and as a conforming lot, has the rights that anyone would have in a lot. It, it's a little restricted because of the easements on it, but it's still a conforming lot.
Sir?
Hi, it's a white one, I give mine in close world. So to echo Attorney Hayes' original statement, it is not our intention to appeal to somebody who's right, that's using the land, right? We have a lot of land, and we prefer to use it ourselves. We do get concerned when we see inconsistencies on documents, right? And so I know that you're gonna address that at next week's meeting, right?
Not next week, next month.
Next scheduled meeting, but, but, you know, it is a beautiful piece of property, it does have a lot of effect, it does have a lot of access to the water, and so going forward, we would like to see the potential inconsistencies cleaned up, solidified, and, you know, mapped out once correctly, and then.
We would too, so appreciate that. What are you, mom? You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone in the back? Yes, sir.
Alan Love, Circuit Avenue?
Hi.
And I have a question from the, of the engineer through the chair. I was wondering what the distance from the back line of the new lot to the front of the existing house?
Do you know what he's asking, Paul?
I took your question.
He's, he wants to know from, from.
The rear center.
The rear, no, from the division, I think, of Parcel 6 and Parcel A to the, to the house, 179, this, I think this is what he's wanting to know.
Parcel B, the rear line of Parcel B, how far is the house from the.
Oh, is that what he wants?
Between B and A.
I'm sorry.
Sir, are you, are you asking for this measurement or this measurement?
The easterly line.
Yes, I can't see the.
That one there, yeah.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood.
Is this the one he's asking for?
It's hard to see, it's hard to see from there, but there is a line, a dotted line written, drawn inside, that's the setback line, that's the angle setback.
It's about 12 feet off the property line, and the actual is 8 feet. We show the setback lines on this plan, by any word, this dashed line you see is a setback line for each side of the lot, and the house is set back about another four feet from there.
And the setback for a, a home to be constructed on Lot A is 20 feet, because it's a rear line, correct?
Correct.
So it, the new home will be 20 feet from that line, the existing home is 12 feet from that line, and has to be at least eight, so there'd be 28 feet between the two homes.
Probably 32 feet.
So the 30-foot setback for the front line is not applicable in that case?
It is in the, it is at the road.
If, if the house on B was built on the setback line, it'd be 32 feet from the porch. If you had a house side by side here, they would only have to be 16 feet apart, so this house is more than twice what the side yard is.
I could probably address that. I think there's a lot, we get the question all the time, is that a front yard? Well, if the setback is not from your front yard, your setback is from the street, that's, if it's not, it's, it doesn't say front yard, it says rear yard, side yard, street.
Great, so what's the, what's the date of the next meeting? Do we have to? Okay. Do we just vote on it?
Yeah, vote on it.
Okay.
Sure.
Motion to continue.
Don't we have one of those little papers, did I give you?
I'm out.
Oh, no, waiver request.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah.
I'll do what I do on second, I'll do one.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, do I hear motion to continue for the hearing?
Motion to continue.
To continue the application for 179 Edward Foster Road for the purpose of reconsidering wetland issues only to April, what was it, 17?
Second.
On paper? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacation.
He's got about a two-minute vacation here, he'll be back.
What's that ticking?
I was expecting two plans that disagreed with each other.
Some people don't, yeah, but some people do accept those.
Plus, I wouldn't stand, shouldn't. Some boys won't accept them. They had to print them out, I think, from the printer up before.
Oh, no.
Business open today, wherever you get a picture, that's why I have.
610.2, that's what I.
I like to print them all out.
Oh, I'll take a copy.
610.2 is the answer to have a structure that can create a lot.
To do this?
Yeah.
I don't, I think we did it, but mistake.
Yeah.
It's a state.
That's right, that's a.
Something for someone to contest our decision.
My kids are still too young.
Heads are vacation.
Next week?
No, it's, I just checked.
Oh, let me do it the week before.
The locations are next week.
Oh, okay.
Do you actually go places every time?
I have to have the potential to, because I have a wife and children.
What does that matter?
If my wife says we're going and the children.
Is that mine or yours?
Well, now it's both of ours, you took notes here, the checkmarks are mine, no problem.
My kids are little, I couldn't afford to do it.
I don't need.
of the building that we would want to enclose and just move it over to the center of the building. Footprint stays the same, square footage wise.
Except you're also proposing a little cut into the setback.
That little bump out on the north wall is, if you look at the, you have copies of the plans, it's a little bump up on the second and third floor, just to give the additional space a bit more room because it is a small footprint.
Okay, Neil, the question I had was, is that considered a, an intrusion into the, further intrusion to the setback since it's cantilevered or not?
Well, there's, there's two issues, yes. It, it is an intrusion to setback, but the other issue, and I talked to Paul earlier and I was not aware of this, the proposed second floor addition, I don't know if Paul was aware of it at the time, but we have a pretty hard and fast rule. We don't let them go more than five feet. I mean, five feet is absolute maximum and five eight is even better.
We start on a fire code, different materials.
Because of fire code, yeah. You basically couldn't have windows back there, you'd have to put a sprinkler system in. It's, the building code regulates setbacks from lot lines, particularly in business district, particularly with wooden structures.
This should be the bump out on the north side of the wall.
Right, that's correct. It's, it's, it's too, it's, it's too close to building code restrictions, most restricted buildings are five feet, all right?
It just costs you about three or four times as much.
Yeah. And there's even, even where it's a wooden building, you could even be looking at some kind of a sprinkler system out in the back of that building. I just, you know, you don't, I don't think you'd want to really get into that expense.
No, that part of it, it's a, the, the design is a work in progress still. That, that bump out on the north wall would be deleted easy enough.
Yeah, so that would have to be, is, is what Neil's saying is you're just going to have to make it look like a bump out with a couple of fancy little.
The design would be a little different.
Framing or something, but you can't actually bump it out.
Yeah, which is, which is fine. As I say, it's still a work in progress, the final design of it. Architect's idea was just, in order to be a three-story building, just wanted to make it not quite look like that.
Is, is parking an issue?
Parking's an issue. Did you think about that?
I have, and I spoke with the building commissioner about that issue and the way he looked at it, we're actually, we, we have three needed spots currently. The way the building is, is structured, based on the square footage of what I have for the first floor and for the storage space above, I believe the building commissioner estimated that we were, we should have eight parking spots.
You sure it's me and not Laura, planning board? It was, okay. I look a lot of plans. That is how I do it, you know, we figured the, what, what's required.
I'm not really a retail operation, I don't need that storage space above, so we're replacing that storage space above with a two-bedroom apartment, which only needs two parking spaces. So we're actually lessening the parking impact by two spaces approximately.
Well.
I understood the commissioner correctly.
I would, the way I would do it, the retail space is 200, one parking space per 200 square feet, I think.
One parking space per 200 square feet gross floor area.
Area, yeah. And, and if he's, if, and the, the dwelling is, I believe, two.
The dwelling would require two.
Yeah.
So what's the gross square footage of the, of the, of the commercial space down below?
Just shy of 900 for heat. Just over 900, isn't it?
Yeah. All is not lost.
Well, because the planning board can waive the requirements, can't they?
Right, right. The planning board can. It, it, you know, it says the planning board may grant a special permit to temporar, temporarily waive the construction, you know, of the, of the, of the, of the parking. The, the issue is, is that, and downtown it always, it's just, it was, I mean, that held up the Jack Conway Building forever.
Right.
On the parking. And it's, it's, it's a bylaw I don't really like, especially because downtown, I think it's really terrible.
Doesn't.
But nevertheless, it's a bylaw that exists and we have to comply with it.
Right.
So, and I don't know how, I don't know how this would really be looked at because this is, these are all condos, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and so, it, it, you know, the bylaw says the parking can be waived by planning board because if it's, you've got a couple of commercial buildings and a couple of residentials and, you know, for the most part, they're not going to over, well, I mean, people always live where they live, but, you know, the heaviest use for parking in a residential is probably not during the day.
Right.
People are gone to work or whatever. But I think it would be something that the planning board would have to.
I, I think to, if, the way, the way you look at it is, is that you, you are grandfathered, okay, this is, this is coming back to me now, you're taking away the storage area.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
He, he's, because these buildings were, existed prior to 1988, I believe, they're, when there was no parking requirements, they grandfathered adds to the parking requirements. And the way we've done this before is we add up all the square footage that is in the existing buildings and the requirements.
Right.
And, and that's what you're grandfathered for. It, it's, 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 it's illusionary.
You're saying that.
Yeah. So if he's not increasing the parking need under the bylaw, he doesn't need any relief. And if he's taken out 900 square feet of storage, which I think is one space per 300, he's actually taking out.
Where's the, where's that?
Three grandfathered parking spaces and he's adding two.
He's, he's removing 900 square feet of storage? It's already a two-story building?
Yeah.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
I don't see that, Neil. Where's it? All other uses.
And this theory has been upheld by a judge. When they, when they, it's in writing, he, I had sent a memo, he concur with my memo.
As you said, it's illusionary, there's no.
Yeah, exactly.
It's understood that the whole downtown district.
Right.
Has insufficient parking, period.
Right. No, because, because what would happen if someone comes in and wants to put in new use and they say, well, we're tearing down this building, but we're putting in new use and all of a sudden you say, well, you're, you, you need to add 10 parking spaces. And it's done to accommodate new buildings, new uses, things like that.
But I remember.
But the presumption is that the, the sufficient parking in the downtown district for the downtown district as it exists.
Exactly.
If you build a new structure that needs more parking than currently exists.
Yes, exactly.
Then you have to get more.
Right.
But if you build a structure that needs less than currently exists.
Then, then you are.
Per se, there's enough.
Then what is grandfathered in the bylaw?
So he's, he's eliminating a use that requires three parking spaces.
Exactly.
And adding a use that only requires two.
But if he's not, you're saying he's got, I thought he had 900 on the first floor and 900 on the second floor.
Right.
Eliminating the second floor.
The storage in the second floor, you could argue that the entire building's retail, but it says the storage in the second floor only requires one per 300 square feet.
I don't see it.
You don't see what?
The storage spot.
Let's see, I think the.
I'm just going on Paul's word.
It's, it's there.
Is the storage up there?
I think it'd be.
The plan says one story, I think that's what threw me.
Yeah.
There's no question, there's another story up there, I've been up there. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, it's just that, that's what threw me initially.
The original plot plan that I submitted with the application, I believe, shows, records it as a storage.
Sure. But Sarah's not seeing the bylaw where it says 300 for, for storage.
It's professional, or other office in, is 100 per square feet.
I know, I have it for my, for my storage. I can't remember what section it's in, but it's in there. Is it office or retail?
Is it considered a warehouse?
In mixed-use buildings in Situate Harbor.
Maybe it could be considered a warehouse? That storage warehouse?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, then you're even better then because you're one space per 600 square foot, so you only need one and a half.
Well, not better, right? Because he's putting him in a van, that's actually worse. Because he only, only needs one and a half now and he's going to need two. We need him to earn the spaces from the storage that he's eliminating.
As I said previously, you could make an argument that the whole building's retail.
And then you've got your. So even, even, as you say, now with the retail at 900 square feet.
Right.
That requires five parking spots. 300 square feet.
Right.
Per storage area is another three.
Yeah, that's, that's a strict application, you know, there, I mean, if you had a ice cream store and you had storage out, you, you, you had a room out back, we consider that whole floor area retail. You know, the entire thing contributes to that retail business, that's how we, we do it.
You, you teach carving, correct?
Yes, sir.
Educational exempt uses?
There you go, I like that.
That's, that's one per 200, so.
Help doesn't have, oh, exactly.
Yeah, that's one per 200 and he's, and he's, that would give him four and a half spaces.
I know, but that's, that's no any better than retail.
No, same. Either, no matter how we get it, we can get to, we can get them to one per 200.
Just, if you're anybody's, Tony, I saw you, it's 760.2 the applicability, that's the section I'm referring to.
I'm not suggesting this happened, but I'm wondering if it's a possibility. Looking at the plan in the package you presented, the plan of land for the Otis House condominium, it shows the area around your structure, number 165, as being for the exclusive use of 165.
Correct.
I'm wondering if you could.
What are you looking at?
I'm wondering if you could piggyback a, a new space in, next to the building so that they were front and rear spaces.
Right.
And block it off and so those two spaces, creating a new space in the downtown area in your exclusive use.
Mm-hmm. That's a possibility.
Put a residential space in there or something.
If, if. If need be.
If we got to that.
Right.
So you have another, a number, a number of ways you could get around it.
Show me exactly what you're talking about then.
See, the condominium, he's got spaces all over here, but this area here is for his exclusive use. So he could, he could, he could get the condominium association to agree to allow him to put a space there and there. I think Neil's.
I don't know if he's can do that.
Point was, correct me if I'm wrong, but that. It's a moot point. The way it's grandfathered.
Yeah.
He doesn't need any more spaces than he currently has. Yeah.
Well, there's some questions to math that's been brought up, I'm not, is it 900 or 600 upstairs?
900.
Oh, 900. I thought someone said.
It's 965.
If he has 900, he's grandfathered for three spaces.
Yeah.
Or, or at least two.
But that's all he's got is three spaces.
Yeah, three spaces, yeah.
But that's all he's got is three spaces.
Plus the downstairs. There's two floors of 900 square feet each.
Right.
Equals how many parking spaces?
Right.
I'm thinking you need five, that's my problem.
No, no, he's.
He's grandfathered, it's, 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 this is where you have to use your imagination. Because it was built prior to 1988, and I could quote you the bylaw, I'd rather explain it. You are exempt from, you know, the parking bylaw unless you increase, and it actually uses the word need, I think.
Right.
Structures and land uses in existence on January 1, 1988.
The light just came on.
Yeah. Are not subject to these requirements as long as they are not enlarged or change the man that increases their parking needs.
So you're saying he's taking three away.
Yeah, you take three away.
And adds two, and he's okay.
Adds two, that's what you're doing.
Okay.
So it's actually hypothetically a decrease.
I hate this bylaw. It really is, it's terrible.
Practically speaking, it works because if you applied this.
Yeah.
You would have no new development in Situate.
Right, right, I know, I know, which is why I hate it, I think it's awful.
But it's, it's what allowed us to do the, the movie theater and the condominiums because the movie theater had.
And they did the same thing.
Need for 7,000 parking spaces or something ridiculous because of the large theater. Bylaw gives the planning board the ability to.
Right. But we're not sending him, not sending him over to the wolves.
No. I don't think you have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to remember that this was on TV.
Don't forget, you televised.
Sorry, planning board. Okay.
Did you catch the story board in?
Mr. Limbaka, how are you, sir? Nice to see you.
Okay. Since you're here, do you have any comment?
I can't speak on behalf of the board.
Oh, okay. Any personal comments?
Personally, I think that Neil's interpretation of the parking board, A, it's grandfathered and B, it's actually less, it's really the critical point of the.
I know it's, I, I think it's something that I always struggle for, I really, I really hate the bylaw. I understand it's, I think it's important to have parking, but it just makes development really difficult. So, well, a couple of things, so I guess, I guess we've kind of come full circle and parking is okay. Is that what we're?
Yeah, I'm good with parking.
Good with parking, good with parking. You understand that you can't go beyond five feet? You gotta.
Okay, we're going close to the lot line.
Right, that.
He can, he can stay at 5.8 or if he's adding on, he's going to have to set it back.
Yeah, that's, that's acceptable, he's still got to do one R five protection, but there's, there's, there's still requirements, but they're not as rigid as if you were, you know, under five feet.
If you're under five, oh yeah, because he's 5.8, not as, okay, okay, so that's good. All right, does any, any board members have any other questions?
So if the present building is 5.8 and he increases it at all, what release, what relief does he need?
He doesn't need any relief, he's not increasing it, he, he, he's not going to be able to increase, he can't go 3.8. He's not going to go.
Right.
He's not going to be able to go any more than.
So we want the entire bump out to be removed, not just limited? We want it to stay.
Well, he wants to go at each inches, you know, but that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think we might restrict it to five feet.
Okay, yeah.
And then if he needs it, that excludes Eves and. Right, excludes Eves.
And just so, the requirement in the business district is eight feet from the real lot line, not 20 or 30 either so.
Okay. Any other comments on it, Neil?
Um, no.
Nope.
Great place to live.
Maybe it'll be for rent?
I know it's, I, I think it's something that I always struggle for. I really, I really hate the bylaw. I understand it's, I think it's important to have parking, but it just makes development really difficult. So, um, well, a couple of things. So, um, I guess, I guess we've kind of come full circle and parking is okay. Is that what we're?
Yeah, I'm good with parking.
Good with parking, good with parking. Um, you understand that you can't go beyond five feet. You gotta.
Okay, we're getting close to the lot line.
Right, that.
He can, he can stay at five point eight or if he's adding on, he's gonna have to set it back.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that's acceptable. He's still gotta do one R five protection, but, um, there's, there's, uh, there's still requirements, but they're not as rigid as if you were, you know, under five feet.
If you're under five, oh, yeah, because he's five point eight, not as, okay, okay, so that's good. Um, all right, does any, any board members have any other questions?
So if the present building is five eight and he increases it at all, what release, what relief does he need?
He doesn't need any relief. He's not increasing it. He, he, he's not gonna be able to increase. He can't go three point eight. He, he's not gonna go.
Right.
He's not gonna be able to go any more than.
So we want the entire bump out to be removed, not just limited. We want it to stay four.
Well, he wants to go at eight inches, you know, but that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think we might restrict it to five feet.
Okay. Yeah.
And then if he needs it. That excludes Eves and.
Right, excludes Eves.
And just so, um, the requirement in the business district is eight feet from the real lot line, not twenty or thirty either so.
Okay. Any other comments on it, Neil?
Um, no.
Nope.
Great place to live.
May, maybe it'll be for rent.
Gonna buy me one.
Eddie? Anyone from the audience wish to be heard on this application? Sir?
Billy, do I one eighty-three front street. I was notified about it, but I am no longer. I've been with the business for forty years or so down in the harbor, and I want to encourage the board to do whatever you can. I'll keep the harbor being built. I was there for fifteen years, the place was a terminic, built and fallen down. We had thirteen vacancies down there one time, and as change came, the old plaza, the old bellboy getting torn down, three stories going up there, the old garages getting started. So anything you see going in down there, I'm totally in favor of, because it's such a restricted business in that town. It only goes from the pier to the bank, and I thought it only goes two or three hundred feet up the street, so I'd love to see anything. Because you gotta have something going on in your town at all times, or we become an abbey to the whitman or something, which is not too exciting a town. So I would encourage you to love you.
Sorry, Abbey to Whitman.
I hope they don't get Situit public access.
You gotta keep something going in your town. Keep viability, it's a community.
Well, I, I, I agree with you. I think anytime somebody wants to invest in our downtown, it's, it's great. Yes. Hey, not at mine or yours, that's good. So, Mr. Orinberger, you had a?
Yeah, just Bill Orinberger, just, uh, for what it's worth, I think Neil's provision of bylaw is dead on. But also, very, it's great to see a local businessman, a local resident, a good guy runs an excellent business, spend, you know, to revitalize that area. And so I encourage the board, you know, I think it's a great endeavor.
Very good. Okay. Any, any, any motion? Any, anybody else? No? Okay. Any motion? Frank, it's your turn. Oh, no, come on, Frank. You don't be greedy on the motions.
Sarah is in charge, don't argue.
That's right, I get to say.
Move to approve the request for a special permit under section eight, ten point three of the zoning bylaw with the finding that the proposed addition of the two stories to the existing, is this a gale again? No.
I don't think it's a gale.
To the existing, um, and, and the proposal for an addition of two stories to the existing single-story non-conforming building in accordance with the plan.
Did we determine it was a two-story building, existing two-story?
Story and a half.
Yeah, just, I know it was, uh.
I'm just reading from the application.
Right, I know, and I picked that one, just to clarify.
Um, yeah, okay, modify, so, so from the existing.
Two-story to a three-story.
Two-story to a three-story non-conforming building at one sixty-five front street as set forth in the plan by Morse Engineering data, March tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Do we want to address the setback on the north side?
Right, 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 provided that.
Subject to a revision of the plan. Deleting the north side setback, which presently shows three point eight feet to a plan which will be consistent through the, the rear setback there to five point eight.
It's actually the side setback. I think, isn't it?
It's left.
The side is, yeah.
Yeah, it's the north side setback.
North side, I'm sorry.
Five, five feet or five point?
Five point eight. No, no more than five point eight, yeah.
Stating at what it is.
Or five, no, it's five point, yeah, five point eight.
This is front. No, this is front.
That's front two though.
Oh, it's two fronts.
So it's here, it's a rear. Either it's eight, in that, in that zone's both eight.
Yeah, this is the front door.
Rear and side are eight.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Oh, second? I'll look ahead myself.
Now all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You're welcome.
Good luck.
Um, who's gonna, who's gonna write this one? Who wants to write? Heads up? Hey, you don't understand the parking.
Thank you.
And, because you're not gonna be here next month anyway.
Yes, I am.
Oh, are you?
I thought you said, oh, that's right, you are now.
Wrong week.
All right, who's gonna write, um? But you know what? We have Barry's Landing, too. Do you understand the parking? Let him do this, because it's a parking issue.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
You do, you do Barry. So John's doing Barry's Landing. Yeah.
Okay.
And add, because I think the parking is.
Well, I can't do John Barry's because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'll take care of that.
I was gonna say, I was trying, what the heck is Barry's Landing? That was from last week, I wasn't here.
Good. I'm glad we were able to resolve that one. I hate that parking issue.
Yeah, but it makes sense why we do it.
Yeah, I understand that. I, the light, like you said, always.
Pre-existing stuff.
Sure, Paul, get her over.
This is actually going well.
Which one's next? We're not even. Island. Glades Road. Did you take that side setback from five?
No, no, no.
That would be an increase that gave you an increase in form date. He would've needed a variance, right? That was my question, I wasn't answering it well. Okay, yes. So we couldn't, if he wanted to take that to five. Beyond five point eight to five, he would've needed a variance, right?
No, it's, it's a building, uh.
Yes.
It's a building code issue, not, it really isn't.
Well, I understand, but to go from five point eight to five, that was my question, I didn't ask it right.
Yes, I think so, yes.
So that's why he and we wanted him to stay at five point eight throughout.
Yeah.
Not even go to five.
Okay. What's up next? Where are we at? This is is.
This is the island?
Five.
This is five, this is, um.
The island?
No. Is it?
Glades Road. Probably located at zero Glades Road.
That's the island, correct?
Okay.
Want to get going?
Uh, as soon as Nicole's ready.
This is the island.
Good, right.
The fifth application study is continued since February coming in two thousand and fourteen. General Connell Trustee, Elizabeth Connell, Connell family trust. Deal by six to five claim fields, request special term of finding indoor variance and/or any other project related to general law, check. Six, ten, ten, and this is done by law, second phase. From the lot, front of the prime, this is. Six, ten, two, to authorize construction of a single family dwelling on the lot.
I won't mark that up.
Having less than five hundred feet of frontage to property, so we need that zero Glades Road.
Hello?
Bill Orinberger. I'm, I'm here tonight with the afternoon of Jerry Canal. I also, I also have Betsy Canal and her husband Ken with us. Canal family has told me they're gonna own this property for fifty-four years as of tomorrow, and.
Great Rock Island?
Yeah, Great Rock Island.
Oh.
Right.
It's a long time.
So it's been the family for a long time. Tonight I have Paul Maribito here with me, and I also have Stan Humphries, our coastal geologist. Uh, and Paul and Stan are both gonna give short presentations, and then in turn, answer any questions on myself. Just by way of background is the Board of Health has already approved the septic design on the system. And also the Conservation Commission has already approved an order of conditions for the construction of the dwelling and appurtenances, and also a stormwater permit on this property. This property was, not this property, but it was subject to prior more intense development proposals, approximately four houses on this and, and two on Lil Rock Island. Canal family's decided, I think this is a pretty, again, this is a very unique, it's a seven point four acre island, and Stan talked, it's very, very unusual topography, soil conditions, and shape to this. And we think it's a very good use for the property, and consequently, we are asking for a variance because in the absence of the variance, they're hardship is because of, they're deprived of the use of the property, which is allowed as a, as a single-family residence in that zone. So at this point, just a brief introduction, I asked Paul to show us what we're, what we have before us today.
What I'd like to do is just briefly describe the site.
Thank you.
And then I'm gonna target the ultimate goal, everything here we'll talk about. Great Rock Island is comprised of seven and a half acres of, uh, primarily upland. There's a salt marsh along the perimeter of the property, and then there's the top of a coastal bank. Proposal is to use an adjacent twelve-foot wide right-of-way from Glades Road up to the property line, and then from there, insert the driveway up the side of the hill to a proposed dwelling in this location here. This is the subject system that has been approved by the Board of Health. Uh, we did receive an order of conditions from Conservation Commission to do the work. We have a hundred-foot buffer zone here, and also someone worked for the subject system as well. So I could. Six twenty scale plan. It's a blow-up of a portion of the property. The proposal is right in this location.
Is that the Great Rock?
There are existing homes that currently, uh, well, these three homes access the existing twelve-foot right-of-way. Uh, the proposal is to pave from.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just stop you? Um, when you say those three homes, they use it right of way, right now?
These three here use the right-of-way to come in.
Which three?
These two homes run on.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right. And the plan is to start the pavement here and bring it up to the, um, to the proposed dwelling. Uh, under the stormwater bylaw, we're installing a series of drains, ditches, and swells, and other, uh, lit improvements in accordance with both the DEP Stormwater Management Guidelines and the town and Situit's stormwater bylaw requirements. Conservation Commission did issue an order of conditions as well as a stormwater permit, a few separate permits, um, to do this work. The fire chief and I met, and he, he asked that we add to the plan, and this plan doesn't include it. He's asking that we install a brand-new six-inch cement line, ductile iron, and pipe up to this point here and install a hydrant. The reason for that is to provide for a better fire flow. Also, the proposed home would be within five hundred feet of it. This hydrant could be used in conjunction with the only hydrant at the end of the road, which is at the other Glades Road, which is in this location here. He's also asked that this turnaround be extended a little bit, so that can handle and accommodate the largest turning rate of vehicles that they have. Um, encouraged of bad weather, if they want to park their vehicles here or up the driveway, then they got the ability to do that.
Can I ask you a question about the hydrant, John? I know, I'm sorry. You're doing so well. The hydrant would be, if, the, the fire department could use it for any of the houses in that area?
Yes, yeah, they could use it for any of these. What they do is to hook the hose here and bring it back, and they could use this one as well.
Okay.
So what it does is they add fire protection for the house, but it's also a benefit to the existing homes along the way at present time, so. That's, it's pretty straightforward, and again, there's only one proposed home up on a, on a island, which is seven and a half acres in size, so. Um, and again, this is the four A scale, it shows you the whole site. I think with that, I'll, I'll end my presentation and open up any questions.
Any questions, Anthony?
No.
Go.
Again, it's the town water as well, aside from the hydrant, the house would be fed with town water.
You know, the, um, this, this, this house will be on a proposed well.
Okay.
So the hydrant would be used for fire protection only.
Frank? Anything for Paul? Okay.
I was gonna ask, Stan Humphries, our coastal geologist, and he has very unique, uh, soil conditions and island things, and I learned a lot in my own nonsophistication from Stan. I think the board might find it interesting.
Good evening. I also have learned a little bit more than I expected in doing some of the research related to the, uh, the fact that this is not only named an island, but it is an island. Um, it's a Thai island, or a Thailand island, and, um, that's by virtue of the fact that this barrier beach has moved landward over the salt marsh in this area and actually now is connected to it. I think that's a photograph, and, and the one that I selected. But I had selected this photograph off of Coastal Zone Management's shoreline change data to better understand where the position of the beach was back in the eighteen hundreds, and it was much further seaward than you see here. What's not on the plan is the barrier beach and its characteristics at that time, a hundred years ago, or two hundred years ago, I should say. So I prepared this chalk, it's not in my testimony or my affidavit, but in taking this eighteen hundreds line of mean-high water out here and using a basic concept that barrier beaches pretty much sustain their same width and height over time. Through sea level rise, barrier beaches migrate landward and upward. And so this landform that is connected to the glades to mine it started out years and years ago, but, um, in geologic time. But in the eighteen hundreds, had a seaward boundary of this red line here, as shown here in the dash line. And I had looked at the width of the barrier beach currently and moved it seaward proportionally to show that the barrier beach was more than likely in this location, not connected to Great Rock Island at that time. But then in the nineteen hundreds, this shoreline now has moved back to virtually the road, but for the, the dike that's out there. And so that that landward migration of the barrier beach, shown here in orange, has now moved into, kind of attached to Rock Island, making it more of a Thai island. That term I had never come across before. I think this is the only feature in Situit that's like this. There are a lot of other drumlins, all the first, second, third, fourth cliffs are drumlin deposits. They are connected to the adjacent, um, headlands also by barrier beaches. But, um, with that, I can take questions. Any more of understanding geology in the area.
Is that line, is that beach gonna, through time, move more?
Well, that, that's a good photograph there of the stone dike system that's, that covers at least half, maybe two-thirds of this area. That substantially will, um, fix or stabilize the waterfront of the ocean, so. Sediment still continues to move over top of that and move landward. Quite a bit of erosion that occurs in destruction of those roads over time. That material will continue to be placed over the salt marsh. But unfortunately, this barrier beach won't have the opportunity to also move its, its beach area landward and keep up, um, topographically in a higher elevation over time. It's just going to get lower and flatter and smooth out.
Is there ever time, you know, I know we've all seen those little animations on TV about, you know, all the pieces of lands, how they formed the continents. Is there ever time that, um, that's, that's not gonna be considered an island anymore?
Well, um, it, at one time was totally surrounded by salt marsh.
Yeah.
This superficial material that's moving over that salt marsh and now attaching it to the land. I suppose starts to fit a definition of peninsula, because it's not totally surrounded by water. But, um, because of the types of soils in this area, very different from the rocky, um, lummy soils, as well as mostly boulders that comprise the, uh, Great Island. It's going to keep its topographic elevation up to somewhere in forty-four feet or something like that. That won't change at all. That was a good question.
Kind of.
And, yeah, just a quick question, the island itself, is that mostly rock or with a bunch of erosion surrounding it? That's not really gonna go over.
No, I, I think you, during the hundred-year floods, the borders of this island will be subject to wave action coming across the marshes. There'll be, um, some erosion of the coastal bank in future, but it's nothing that's going to be regularly eroded and will move, um, measurably to the extent that it would threaten any structures that I've seen proposed in the plan.
And? No questions?
I'm just harking back to the concept of Pangea and continental Europe. I'm not sure it flies here.
Atlantis horizons.
No, I. Got access to it, it's, um, it's appropriate.
The only issue is the frontage, right?
Yeah, the driveway.
Right.
Yeah. And, and the elevations of the island, I won't, I won't reiterate Stan's affidavit, I thought it was excellent. We have elevation eight to forty-four, rocky crags, unique soil conditions, you know, we got all three, that's unusual for a variance. We got the soil conditions, the shape is round, the topography is incredibly erratic. It's, it's certainly not consistent with any other prop, property in that zoning district, so. We have a unique situation, and one of the things, as I said, the Canal family's owned this for fifty-four years, and this was way before, this was before adoption of frontage requirements. I mean, the lot was created by the Land Corps in nineteen twelve. And, uh, so it's way before any of these things, and it was a buildable lot, and was only subsequently from the town of Situit's adopting a frontage requirement that, the reason that we're here for a variance. So this property on the Land Corps plan that you have has been in existence since nineteen twelve, and it has not been changed, modified, reduced, or anything else. So the Canal family simply, and their predecessors have certainly owned it, so. So, you know, there's a key nexus here for the cause of the variance and the hardship is tied directly to the existing conditions that have been there for over 100 years. And I can go through the irregular shape of the parcels and all of these things, all of which are enumerated very specifically in Stan's affidavit. I think anyone can see, it's kind of obvious, literal enforcement of the frontage requirements, the pride of the Canal family of the right to use this. And again, this is a pretty modest, suggestive use for the property, though there was a prior proposition before the planning board for four houses on this. A variance is, you know, is to build one house and any other pertinent uses that are allowed under the bylaw. And so I feel we meet, we meet all the variance criteria, you know, by 4A and we already have the other necessary permits and from, particularly, just so you know, from a conservation standpoint, my clients paid for the, or merryl, the town's own consulting engineers, the final report is they, they agreed with Ross Engineering's engineering of this, that basically it meets stormwater management criteria, no water comes off the property. As a matter of fact, the entrance onto the property is all as porous pavement, actually, with all kinds of infiltrators and other things. So no water's coming off this property. And I think in light of the fact, and again, which is something I learned, I thought this was an R3 district. I didn't realize when you get way the heck down on Glades Road, right before the glades, it becomes an R2 district. But nevertheless, it's 20,000 square feet, it's a seven-and-a-half acre island for one home. So I'll answer any questions, but I think all the variance criteria, we make them very specifically on, which is, I've never had a situation on all three of the statutory criteria.
Neil, do you have a comment?
No, I'm just reading the affidavit. The, I guess, because I've given this some thought and, you know, an island connected by a bridge, is it still an island? An island connected by sediment, no. Is that not, no longer an island? It's, it, it's just food for thought, I just.
But no man is an island.
Yes, a man is an island.
And yet, there is, there is the island of man, which happens to be the same, what did you call it, a topo or something?
A tombol.
A tombola.
Tombola.
It's a tombola, I found, I learned that today and I don't know if you knew that.
The island of man does have excellent whiskey.
We should all go there.
The only other thing it embellishes, if you've had an opportunity to read the letter from the fire chief, and not only is this neutral, but now there are some fire access issues and other things, and we're actually correcting, not only for our own benefit, but for the benefit of the immediate neighborhood, you know, the firefighting capacity of, you know, for health and safety reasons. And also, regardless of the fact, whether, I think Stan is pretty clear, this is an island geologically, but this is, this is a very similar situation recently, you know, about a year ago on Bailey's Island.
Yeah.
It's the same situation, it's connected with the Causeway, you know, from Indian Trail, over Wood Island Road, over, you know, over Wood Island and then to there. So it's a very analogous situation.
Now, does this, I know this is not really relevant, but does this, do you also, the same family, own Little Rock Island?
Yes.
Okay. That was the only variance I ever granted. We saw what happened to that, it's nothing.
Oh, you see.
Yeah.
You see what happened? Jimmy Burke had to push his tables a little further back because they got a variance for that. Now you can, you can hear your dinner mates.
There you go. So, all right, we did get some objections, I noticed some letters. I don't know if any of those people are here tonight and want to speak.
I did not send the letter. My name is Dan Carney. I live at 163 rear Glades Room. Actually, Mr. Maravito's picture was really helpful, you know, by putting that out.
Which?
The one that blew up the houses just up the.
And which, can you point to us for which house you're at?
This is my house here.
Okay.
So there's one thing I wanted to correct. I think Mr. Maravito said three houses use this, in fact, more than three. The driveways for both of these houses are off this 12-foot.
Okay.
As is the driveway for this house, as is my driveway. As is, it's not shown here, this takes a left, there are two more homes here. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six homes that are sharing this 12-foot right-of-way. What I didn't hear in the presentation is, what's the proposal? Does that become a common driveway? Does that become a subdivision road? I didn't hear that.
You can speak to it?
Yeah, just the answer to that is, just like probably the other property, I didn't research the title, since 1912, there's a deeded Land Court right-of-way on that. So it does not become a public road. It will be used in common with all the other, with all the other properties.
So does that mean it's a common driveway?
No, it's, no, a common driveway has a specific meaning under the bylaw of the town of Situate. So until we get onto our property, there aren't going to be, other than, you know, it's not going to be paved, it's not going to be this, they're bringing in water service to increase this. So basically, you know, the quality of the, of the way will remain similar to what it is. Am I correct in that call? So the intention is, isn't to make this a public road so that anyone else has access to it or anything like that? No.
Okay, so I guess what I'm concerned about is, while I can appreciate that in 1918 we didn't have these laws, we do have them now and presumably for a reason. And so I don't see any, any way that there's any frontage here. I mean, heck, we all sat through and I was worth of the discussion on the 50-foot versus the 100-foot in this meeting. Here we have zero feet and maybe you could try and talk yourself into the fact that that right-of-way is common, we won't call it that language, but it's common. Shouldn't we look to some guidance in the zoning bylaw as to how a common driveway would be treated? If you look at the guidance, it says a maximum of three homes. We've already got six, so we've got a non-conforming situation. Wouldn't this make that non-conforming situation worse? The other point I wanted to make is that while I appreciate this turnaround for a fire truck, I can tell you my own sister took out this wall with her minivan because this corner, there's no way a fire truck's going to take this corner. There's 12 feet here, there's a, there's a wall on this side, there's a fence on this one. This is irrelevant. There's no way a fire truck can take that corner. As I say, the minivan couldn't take the corner.
Right. Well, the only thing I can tell you is that the fire, fire department signed off on it, that it was sufficient, so.
That it's sufficient to take that left onto the 12-foot right-of-way.
Well, I'll defer to the fire chief.
Yeah.
He has a little more expertise than I do in that area.
Right.
But the only other point in helping to answer that question is on, Situate has a bylaw on a common driveway situation and that contemplates a construction under present standards, which all kinds of, you know, qualifications to build a common driveway. So this isn't a situation, in the construction standards it tied into when they actually, if you read it, it varies depending on the number of homes and the amount of construction that's on it. But exactly the reason why 4A exists is this is exactly the kind of situation that it contemplates when there's, when there's a bona fide hardship due to the three very narrow criteria that are specified in the statute, which I believe this is exemplary of those issues.
I think, I think the thing to understand is that this is not the same type of application as you've heard before. This is for variance. This means we're saying that they don't have to have any frontage, okay? And it's an extremely limited circumstance that you can get this. And in fact, I've been on the board seven or eight years or something, this is only the second one, and the only other one I granted, that I remember granting, was for the other island. Because it's, and it's, you have all, and you have all kinds of criteria and Mr. Attorney Orenberger was going through that. It has to be completely unique about the shape of the land, the topography of the land, and it's, it can't exist elsewhere in that same zoning district. So, you know, people come all the time and want variances and they just don't meet it because it's such an extremely limited situation. This is really unique and they're not changing that right away. They're not asking us, we can't do anything with it. But it's something that, it's a legal right that existed for over 100 years now and they're just, you know, kind of been around exercising it. They have an opportunity to build and they don't have any more rights or any less rights than they've had for 100 years on that, on that right-of-way. They get to go up and down it because it's, it's a legal right that they, they were given over 100 years ago. Does that help at all?
Well, I guess then my question's moved towards what the intended use is. There was a discussion earlier about the four homes, it was brought up twice here already. What wasn't brought up is that that was not passed and it was not passed because the use of four homes' worth of dwelling was going to create enough traffic that it was deemed not to be beneficial for the neighborhood, given that all of us who have those homes in that area used that 12-foot right-of-way to get to the beach, our kids travel on that. To add more traffic to an already dangerous environment was something that in that previous discussion was deemed to be not beneficial to the neighborhood and was actually a safety concern for the pedestrians who also are sharing that space. So my question is, what would this use be in four homes, I think at the time they were just going to be three bedrooms, was deemed unsafe? What would the use be, what would be proposed now?
A house, an eight-bedroom house.
How big, is there a restriction on how big a house can be?
It's shown right on the conservation, it's shown on the existing plan, Conservation Commission already approved it.
Tell me what it is.
I don't have my ruler with me, you pull, flip down to the first sheet.
What's the, what's the septic, what's the septic system designed for?
The septic system's designed for eight bedrooms.
Righty, legionary?
The perk, with perk, perk, they have 23 bedrooms.
I see. But it's so, we're designing a septic system for an eight, up to an eight-bedroom home?
So is?
Well, let me, let me just, let me just kind of help you out here on this. First of all, the, the other proposals for this piece of property weren't, were not in front of this board. They were in front of the planning board and quite frankly, I have no idea why, what their reasoning was. But this is an all-new application.
I'm sure it's a matter of record.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it is too, but I mean, it was not before this board and we get to look at everything anew. So I don't know what their reasoning was, but it wasn't approved and here we are today.
No, I'm certain it's a matter of record though. I mean, you could, if we continue this, we could, I'm sure, look up and find out the records.
It doesn't matter to us, I have to tell you.
That was an accusation.
Yeah, it was, and it was somebody else.
I didn't, you were both.
I just said, it doesn't matter to us, we have to make our own decision and the reasoning of the planning board is their reasoning. You know, we have to look at the criteria, we're asked to do something very specific and so, you know.
Well, and it's fair to say that not being familiar with the application before the planning board, it was for a subdivision, I imagine.
Right.
And a subdivision is an entirely different thing. This is a piece of property that is owned and has a right for certain things to happen on it. It has access because of a deeded right-of-way. So there's no, there's nothing new here, they're not asking to do a taking or impose on anyone else's rights, it's a right that already exists. And to build a structure, you know, a dwelling on the property, it doesn't matter how big it is, it's a large parcel. It's, there aren't a whole lot of eight-bedroom homes in the, essentially, I imagine, but there are a few. I lived in, lived in one.
Plymouth House of Corrections doesn't count.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that they're, it doesn't mean that they're going to be used to their maximum. I mean, there are eight-bedroom homes in this town that are being used with, by three people living in them. It doesn't, yes, you're probably going to see guests coming and they won't be parking on Glades Road or on the right, or on the 12-foot section of the right-of-way, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jackie Sandell. My address is 147 Old Bridge Road, so I'm not on the map.
You're not on the map, okay.
I'm not on the map. But I really share Dan's concerns about the effect on the neighborhood and the cost of the fire and the safety. I know I take a lot of heart in the fact that the fire chief did bless this, but I've been told by our neighbors that at least two homes that she could remember have gone down in the neighborhood by fire. And the fact that Dan's wife couldn't get the minivan down that parking, I just think is very troubling to me. Number one, on the fire, on the safety, you know, I have small children, they run around and move everywhere, it's kind of the life of the neighborhood. And so I am concerned about extra cars going up that road through the middle and through the backs of the neighborhoods. And number three, I guess maybe it's all in the affidavit, but I think for the benefit of the public, it would be important to understand why none of us can do anything with our lots, really, and why where there was nothing and there's no pre-existing structure, why these people can build there. I understand that there's a previous sale agreement in place, so, you know, the fact that they're owning it, I understand that they're selling it, subject to, I assume, getting all of these permits. But I guess I want to understand that, why someone can build where there's no footprint. I mean, we always hear about footprints. Number, gee, I.
Can I, can I address that?
That would be great.
An undeveloped parcel of land that meets the requirements of zoning setbacks, et cetera, you can build on. That's what we do. That's, you go and you draw a plan and you record it with the Registry of Deeds and it's, you can build on it. It's different from changing what currently exists on a parcel that is, that is not dimensionally, doesn't dimensionally meet zoning. And that doesn't mean you can't do anything with your home. If your home went down or you wanted to come before the board to have modifications or do things to it, we'd be looking at your application in the same way we look at the others. The footprint is really just a case of, sometimes your footprint of an existing home on a lot doesn't meet current zoning and applicants come before us to look for relief in that area. This applicant's not looking for any relief on setbacks or lot size or, you know, that's not the issue before us. This is a seven-acre parcel of land that they want to build a house on. I don't, I'm not following your logic about the houses that exist there on, pre-existing non-conforming lots, being limited on how they can build. They certainly can build if they have a, if you have the ability to create onsite sewage disposal and you have the lot size and certainly you could do it. You could take that, take four or five houses, you take the houses that are there, acquire seven acres of land and ask to build a house on it, I guarantee you're going to be allowed to build a house on seven acres of land. It's.
So that's not part of the variance that was requested? The variance only deals with frontage?
Correct.
That's right.
Okay.
It's just about, they don't have frontage on a way. Their frontage is through a right-of-way access.
It also might be worth it to mention, the applicant's not before us asking for the right to traverse this right-of-way to get to and from the property. They have that right now and they, they have that right, they could, they could do certain things on this property that would require a lot more traffic on that right-of-way than a single-family home would.
It does have eight bedrooms available. It's, I guess, what we were concerned about with number of cars going through that narrow right-of-way. And, you know, that is the way to the beach, there's only one entrance to the beach for the whole neighborhood, so, you know, it's all sorts of traffic. So, let me see, I noticed in the bylaws that there's some requirements that the building relate harmoniously with the nature and context of existing buildings in the vicinity. I do note, for the record, that all the existing buildings in the vicinity, hazard, yes, no one comes near an eight-bedroom home. So the scale of the building is quite different.
The casino at the end of Glades probably does.
That's right.
But would that be in the vicinity?
As the crow flies, it's in the vicinity.
It's in the zoning district.
It's in the, and it's also in the zone.
Would it be in the zone?
It's in the zoning district.
I stand corrected on that. When I think of vicinity, I think of the neighborhood.
But it, but it's.
That's a different.
Think of it this way, think of it this way. As you come down Glades Road, you have a certain zoning district and then it changes to a different zoning district and then it increases in the zoning district. And the Glades Association properties are all in that, that new district.
Larger.
That this one's in, the larger district. So when this district was laid out, it included this parcel along with those, that land of the Glades Association. So that's the vicinity.
That's interesting.
So your point, your point is well taken, there is a much larger house out there than what they. There is a much larger house out there than what they're planning to develop.
But, the, why is, I guess, just explain for my benefit, then, why are they in a different zoning district than where we are, where it would be deemed, I don't know, thickly settled or whatever those yellow signs say?
You're in the same zoning district.
You are in the same zoning district.
You are, you're in an R2 district.
In an R2, okay.
The other thing, just to, just to reiterate, and I think I may have lost the thread of this, you know, and again, I defer to the fire chief is coming into there and this is actually, I heard the story that there has been fires in this property. This significantly increases the ability of the Citroen Fire Department to suppress fires. You know, new water lines, new hydrants, that's all good stuff. Turnaround that they don't have.
Well, they're up, the opponents are saying that you can't get in there to turn around, but you could still walk your hose in there and pick up on the...
Well, that's right.
And if there's a big enough fire, those trucks can knock down a wall and, and a fence pretty easily if they have to get into access. And I don't mean access of fire there. I mean access of higher fire Mr. Carney's house or, or, I, I used to know some of the names of the people on the...
You know, I think, and I think we have to remind ourselves that Chief Judge, Chief Judge is an extremely intelligent, knowledgeable and dedicated fire professional in this town who has seen some terribly tragic things happen and he would not, he would not endanger anyone's lives for the sake of one house being built. If, he thinks that it's sufficient to handle things, I think you can feel very comfortable in that, so. Sir?
Two, two questions that I have. First of all, is it reasonable to ask if the variance is granted, because our, our primary concern is the access road? If it's granted, is it reasonable to ask that it be attached with the provision that it could never be more than a single-family home and that there would be a limit to the number of cars that will be parked at that?
Well, well, we can't, we can't limit the number of cars, period.
Okay.
You know, that's just, we don't limit the number of cars, except in a permanent, permanent situation.
The, it is actually kind of more of a question. When you grant a variance for frontage, I'm assuming it applies to one building and if they were to construct more, they would need to go for subdivision and I think that was, that was, you agree with that?
Yeah, it's a single, we're asking for a single-family, a single-family home and whatever the customary pertinent uses are allowed.
If the board grants a variance, I think it should, should be noted that, you know, this is frontage for one dwelling and, and I know the, the prior application went to the planning board was for a subdivision.
Right.
And with a subdivision, the reason it failed is that you have to improve the road, but they could have, on seven acres, they could have potentially twenty-three bedrooms, they could have built a lot of houses, four, five houses. And, and I know, you know, a lot of the discussion back down was proximity of the houses when they widened the road and tried to improve it and everything else and that, I'm pretty sure that's why the applicant went through, just wasn't going to happen.
And just by way of clarification, one of the butters was asking us, there are no purchase and sale agreements on this property. And in fact, the Canal family for a number of years and, and, you know, both their parents have passed, we're going to build a family home or even something more than that, but now the time has come with the family is they are going to sell this and some new families are going to come and build a house. And the reason is, you know, the footprint that's there is for conservation purposes for the simple reason is whoever, as anyone knows on a conservation issue, anyone who's going to build something, you know, there's like a thousand-to-one chance that's what they're going to build. They're going to build within, within the perimeter of that. So in all likelihood, that isn't going to be what it's in, but it's going to be within the perimeter of that and if it deviated from that perimeter, they have to go get all new permits.
The, the reason for my question, this has been a fascinating evening.
You just have to identify yourselves each and every time.
Every time. My name is Dan Carney, I live at 163 Rear Glades Road. The reason for my question, earlier in the evening, we saw an example where a four-bedroom house turned into five apartments and I'm wondering what an eight-bedroom house could turn into later, once we've opened a variance. This is a variance you, you explained for a very specific purpose. This is no frontage, this is a unique property. You started to lay out the reasons why it might be granted. What I'm concerned about is that that passion would be lost subsequently when, say, an eight-bedroom house wanted to become a ten-apartment house, just like the example we saw earlier.
It's, it's in a residential zone and the other apartment was a business zone, so they're treated differently. So we've got that, that hurdle right off the bat.
Plus, just by way of clarification, that was a pre-existing non-conforming building that's there for 150 years. This is brand-new construction and so the variance is going to, if it's issued by the board, it's going to be to construct a single-family dwelling with other appurtenances allowed under the bylaw by the single family, all right? And that's all it is. So you cannot make a two-family, you cannot subdivide this to make three or four-house lots, you can't do it.
Well, it is, and the customary appurtenances that you, it's reasonable to assume on a seven-acre parcel that there may end up being a tennis court out there or...
Right.
Pool might be difficult because of the topography.
Above ground.
But, but a above-ground pool or some, some sort of a, certainly other things are going to be done there associated with a single family, but the, the variance that they're asking for and what it will be will be a variance to build a single-family home and any change from that would, would be in violation of the variance. And variances are so hard to come by, you better ask for the one you want. You're not going to get a change to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kitty Ellers, I live at 151 Glades Road, front, and it still completely boggles my mind because that area is so small and there's so little space and the houses are so close together that I decided to drive down, I call it the, the Carney's driveway, it's, I know it's a sheer driveway, and I, I own a VW Beetle. I could barely turn and get down the driveway. It just boggles me how these big trucks are going to get down. And another thing that, that kind of makes me think is the integrity of Glades Road. After 101 Glades Road, or maybe 145 Glades Road gets very, very narrow and two people usually can't go. One person has to pull over to the side and let the other one by. There's two-way traffic and there's no sidewalk. Technically, Glades Road is nothing but several sinkholes filled with dirt. I don't know how construction trucks are going to go down there and turn that corner that my VW couldn't do. You know, I'm, I'm just, because I was down there walking and, and it's not that I'm against the house, but it's the space. Everybody's on top of each other and when I saw the four houses, there's, they're all lined up. There's not just six houses. Beyond that, there's other little houses and houses going up and down Glades Road. I'm sure you guys have probably already been down there and walked around to see how small the space is. And as I said, the integrity of the beach and the beach wall, which is already undermined from the storms and the use of the big trucks going back and forth, back and forth, is going to further crack the wall and all the little cottages there, some of them are close to 100 years old, the, my walls are cracking when, when the big trucks go by. What about that?
Well, the only thing, the only thing I can tell you is that...
Sorry, but about the place that I'm thinking...
No, it's, I understand, I understand your concern and, and clearly it's going to be a challenge for whoever, you know, whoever the contractor...
The challenge of the people left behind.
Yeah, well, it will be, it will be for a period of time, but again, you know, they're going to have to, they're going to have to figure it out because, you know, I don't know how they're going to do it. That's not, that's not our job to figure out. I don't know if they're going to have to bring a helicopter in or something. I don't know, but they're going to have to get it in there and you, you can, you cannot find a better building, you know, inspector on this South Shore who will, if there's problems during construction, sorry Neil, that, you call them up. And, and the contractors, you know, they, they don't want to cause damage either because they could potentially be responsible.
I would, I would say, you know, they, they have some very large construction vehicles, you know, carrying lumber and everything else. They probably won't be able to make that turn.
Yeah, they're going to have to figure it out.
As a result, they're going to have to bring smaller trucks, which is better than bigger trucks in this situation. And I think as far as...
Well, I think also too that, you know, you have factors, other homes in that area that need work down on their house...
Yeah.
Have to make accommodations to get vehicles in to do work at times that, that needs to be done too, and I'm sure they'll have to accommodate the same thing because you only have open, opening to get through. So no matter whether you're going to the, you know, proposed house or work on existing houses, vehicles of some sort have to get in there to do work from time to time.
I'm Kitty Ellers, 151 Glades Road. Actually, there is, there's no time that nobody's not doing work on Glades Road. There are constant contractors and most of them usually at my house, but all the time. I mean, every up and down the road, it, all, pretty much year-round.
Yeah.
Always.
I guess nature of the beast.
Oh, I know all about that.
He knows about that.
Yeah, it's called northeasters.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm Brendan O'Donnell, I live at 159 Glades Road and we live in a very tight community and where we are all friends and the houses are very small and it would destroy our community and it, um, there's not enough frontage and, uh, I mean, I, I see the board say, you know, it's, the fire trucks can get up there, that's great, but actually, I don't mean to say this again, but actually, it is a common driveway because me and, uh, uh, his father, Tommy, share the driveway, so. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jackie Bay Sandell again. Just a quick question and I'm not sure if this is for the soil expert who may have looked at this, but are there any endangered plants or anything on the island that, that would need to be considered in her application?
No.
Did you study that?
That came up with conservation. The answer's no.
Conservation is the, the board that works on...
We reviewed that issue of conservation, that question was asked, he answered already.
Oh, actually, I was asked about wildlife, not about plants.
Oh, excuse me.
The soil, I thought, here, since we've got our soil expert. I was there, so I...
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure geology and botany are the same thing, so...
Well, I don't...
I just, I just don't want to put him, I just don't want to put him on the spot. He's presented as an expert on geology and I think he might be talking about botany. I'm not sure.
But it could be the...
Yes, Kitty, it's not birds.
I don't know what triggers such a...
Botany is, no, botany is plants.
Plants, right.
Our high school teacher informs us. Yeah, I don't know, that's a question that we really ever, it's, we've never been asked and it's never been kind of brought up, but, huh?
It's a conservation question, isn't it?
It's a conservation question, yeah.
Yeah, that would be, there's a couple of boards that are more suited to dress up than us.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, yes, I'm Jen Gagin, I'm at 65 Commerce Street.
Hi.
Been here throughout the evening as everyone else and I'm waiting for, actually, the next thing that's coming up and I'm just...
Why can't we move along?
...just feel like, again, off-topic, and you very politely said earlier today, you know, if we could not ask questions twice, if we could keep things moving forward, I would politely request that we please do so.
Well, I appreciate that. It's not exactly like town meeting where someone wants to move the question, but we want, you know, this, I know, I know, but the, and the important thing is for everybody to remember is that as they've testified, this is, you know, they feel that this is going to change their neighborhood, so we want to make sure that they're able to say what they need to say, ask the questions. We've got all the experts here, so I think it's winding down, but, you know, we just again want to make sure everybody has a chance to be heard and we'll stay as long as we need to stay for the next application, so.
And sometimes we do, we do come up with some new information that we're not familiar with in these hearings, so it's, we don't come in with a predetermined decision. This is something we have to work out here in public. The only way we can do it.
All right, yes, sir.
Just one more, Dan Carney, 163, uh, Glades Road. One more thing, we've, we've said a few times that the fire chief signed off, is that in the affidavit and can we confirm?
It's a, it's a letter that he wrote and it's in the file and...
Can you confirm for me that it, I understand that the radius on the picture he has confirmed is sufficient for the turnaround. Did he specifically say that he could take the turn from Glades Road on the twelve-foot right-of-way?
What he simply said, "I concur with the improvements showed on the revised site plan, which would include all of it, dated March 11th, 2014, and am satisfied that the improvements to the road, the turnaround and the additional water main and the fire hydrant will enhance the department's capability in assessing and providing necessary services to the property and those in the neighborhood."
Taking, nothing away from, from him, could I ask that he please amend that to make sure that he has been considering the turn from Glades Road on? I could imagine that when he looked at the plan, he saw and commented on the other improvements, which I agree, are quite appealing. Perhaps not, but it isn't specifically stated there. Could we make sure that he specifically addresses that he can take the left off Glades Road?
You know, the, the fire department has many vehicles. They have ambulances, they have command vehicles, they have pickup trucks, they could carry men, hook up hoses. I mean, I, I think it's, it's, you know, I just think...
We're thinking of a thirty-foot ladder truck doesn't always...
Perhaps not and that's, that's, but they don't have that now either down there.
And I would suggest in an emergency, Police Powers Act, you have the ability to do anything you want. Those stone walls, those little entry walls that abup the right-of-way would not be an obstruction to getting emergency vehicles into that area. We're not talking about emergency vehicles accessing this right-of-way on a daily basis. It's in, in an emergency, those stone walls come out. I don't think that's a, I, I think between the two houses, there's no question they could get a piece of equipment in there if they needed to.
With all due respect, when I was speculating on whether they could do that, you told me to defer to the chief of fire. I'm only asking you to do the same thing.
No, I, I understand, but the problem with the, that the fire chief has when we look at other applications like, like this and other things, they need to be able to get behind buildings, get into areas where vehicles are not normally, don't normally access. They don't, they don't care about the right-of-way. They care about is there enough space between trees because they can't take out trees. Turning the vehicle around is important. As Neil said, having specialized equipment, they might feel it appropriate in times of storms to stage a piece of equipment in that hammerhead turnaround that would be there in case people needed to be evacuated, that could get in the right-of-way without damaging the stone walls. But I think the fire department, the improvements, what the fire department's looking for at that point is, can we ask the applicant to do anything additional in their layout to further enhance? They can't ask to do something on property they don't own, but they, but they ask the applicant to propose improvements that will enhance the fire access. Stone walls, if they're, if they're a deterrent, in times of emergency, they are not. In, in, on a regular basis, I can understand accessing with heavy equipment. I don't think you're going to have, you'll trouble getting cement, cement mixer into that right-of-way, but they'll, but the applicant, but the applicant will have to figure out how they're going to build their, construct their property. Certainly you know what it's like getting equipment into your home. I just don't think that's a big issue for, for us to make a decision upon.
Okay, so I guess the answer is, no, it's not reasonable to ask that, that the...
We're not going to ask him to do it. Chief Judge, when he looked at it, he looks at all the plans, they're forwarded to him, he makes the considerations. I don't question how he arrived at it, I just, I just know that he says that it, it looks good to him and that's enough for us, so. That's enough for me anyway.
I hope we don't look back on this and wish that we could do it further.
I don't think that building one house is going to put the neighborhood at any greater risk for fire.
That currently exists with the layout.
Having a fire hydrant there.
Is going to enhance.
Place to turn a vehicle around has to improve it from Chief Judge's standpoint.
Good. Anyone else? All right.
You want to do this motion? Variance.
Wow. Did I do the last variance? What's the criteria? You want to go through the criteria again? There we go.
Granting of variance, I think the motion is something to the effect of granting of variance for construction of a single-family dwelling with appurtenances in that it meets the conditions of, by variance criteria of Mass. General Law's 48, Section 10, and specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the land in a special affecting such man, but not generally affecting, not generally the zone district which is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner and the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of the ordinance or bylaw.
All right, I'll make this motion. I move that we grant the request of the applicants for a variance for the construction, for a variance from the lot frontage requirements of the bylaws to authorize the construction of a single-family dwelling on a lot known as Great Rock Island, which has less than one hundred, required 100-foot of frontage. As, I don't have the dates of the plan, as laid out.
January 21st.
January 21st, 2014. Plan drawn by Ross Engineering. Another part of.
A revision date of March 11th.
And a revision date of March 11th. We do not have that? Oh, yes. With a revision date of March 11th, 2014. Further discussion? Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll, just want to draft a decision on this.
Please. Thank you.
Thank you for your help and invitation.
Thank you to the neighbors for coming out. And I just have to reiterate, we do this every time. One of you could be before us and we'd be looking at it from the same standpoint of what you need to be able to do with your property by law, by right.
It's just such a waste of beautiful property, though.
I don't know, I think the applicant thinks it's the perfect use of it.
The applicant would be perfectly happy, I'm sure, to sell it to anyone if they'd like to keep it in its natural state.
What's Little World's End?
Well, trustees for reservations would be happy for a donation too.
Well put.
Thank you.
I know.
Good to see you.
One house, Mike.
I know.
It's going to be gorgeous house.
If anyone want a water? Do you like one?
I got, I'm good, I'm good.
One? I got, no, I have, I have it in my office, I buy it.
Please. John?
No, I'm all set, thanks. They'll be back, Tony.
You are next. You're sitting at the applicant's, I guess.
Right, the games. You're going to UMass tomorrow?
Harvard won today.
Did they really?
Yeah, they won. Beat Cincinnati.
That's great.
Yeah.
12 seed beat the 13 seed.
That was one of Obama's upsets.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. That's the only thing I saw on the news was, was that he picked Harvard, yeah. I'm like, wow, that's.
I think with the Crimea issues going on, I think he shouldn't be making.
You're right, I think you're probably right.
I don't think it looks good. Personally.
Racquetology.
I don't know, hearing one. Can we put a test screen up while we're in recess? Just a slight, you're out late. I didn't recognize him in front.
Probably not.
Good.
We're not doing anything different, but. So I just think it would be better. Okay. I've actually thought it's. I've not thought much about it, but I thought.
That would foster, right?
What's that? Well, no, 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 you're always good. I haven't had to gamble, I thought I would have a gamble. It's been a good meeting.
She brought up World's End. You know that World's End was at one time, it was on the finalist list to be the site of the United Nations.
I read that.
Now, let's put the other board up, you're going to be second, all right?
Three or four sites in the other one.
What is that?
World's End of the 10.
Really?
When they were citing the United Nations, it was on the finalist list.
Wow.
Gorgeous place.
Because it was, it was all undeveloped. It was laid out as a house lots. And it hadn't been developed at the end of World War II. As was the roadblock. About access down Martin Lane. Those diplomatic cars.
That's such a gorgeous place.
These people haven't been accessing it. Great, well, kind of, without permission.
Well, you're more, you're kind of on the same. Okay. Where's Neil?
Doranberger, are you still here?
I'm still here.
You know, I hardly recognized you. Well, good.
Channel 11, something like that.
All right. Wait for Neil to get back in. Is he coming? Thank you.
Oh, merci beaucoup, monsieur.
And that's where we like this guy.
It's okay, Neil, I'm all set.
What's that? You want to sit, Bill?
I'm all set.
Go across to your, go across to your office. Get some. Nicole, next application.
Yes. Next, the final application this evening is Ryan Allen LLC of P.O. Box 305, 104 First Road. See, say findings, special current and/or other relief of the board report may grant to general law, such as Section 6 of the existing zoning bylaws, including Section 470, 820, 952, the existing zoning bylaws to authorize nonconforming uses of the property to be used at that location.
Mr. Aronberger.
Hello, Bill, Bill Aronberger. I'm here tonight behalf of the applicant, Ryan Allen LLC. Sean Harris is the manager there, but Sean will not be participating in tonight's meeting because he's a public official. But there's a property owned by the, Sean's wife is here and is owned by the Harris family, owned for some period of time. I also have a surveyor here, Ralph Cole, who's under the weather with the flu, but is a, quite a trooper. And Barbara Thocell, our engineer. I also have Lawrence Gogody, president of ours consulting, who's our, who's helped design and work on some of these buildings. Just by way, by way of backdrop here, there's two things which we're asking for the board tonight. Back approximately 10 years ago, the petition before this board, and it was determined that of what the nature of the pre-existing nonconforming uses were on the property. And amongst myriad uses, some of them were an auto body repair shop, the other one was for vehicle and truck storage and likewise. What the, what the proposition is tonight is, is twofold. One, we're looking for what in, in layman's terms, what we're looking to do is Mark Farciano, who owns the auto body shop. Mark was dislocated by the MBTA off of Stockbridge Road, a longtime businessman, and the Harrises were able to accommodate him. He had over 4,000 square feet of space before the MBTA took, took the property. They really didn't help move. He's been trying to exist as a local business, have been 1,500 square feet of space and for a period over 10 years now. And what he's, what he's looking to do to increase the size of his auto body shop for, in a nutshell, so he's not going to have to be working on vehicles outside, having his workers outside, getting more stuff under the roof. Similarly, Sean Harris Enterprises has oil trucks on the premises, particularly in inclement and cold weather. They don't have adequate area to house them. The proposed, what we're simply proposing is to get the truck storage under the roof. By getting it under the roof, not only for, you know, safety reasons, but also for noise reasons, particularly in cold weather, no idling of trucks, you can work on trucks, we'll get everything. We're not, we're not requesting that we're changing any uses here, simply we're getting these things under a roof. So that in a nutshell is what we're looking for, a finding to that effect. In addition to that, part of the property here is in the, is in the town's floodplain and watershed protection district. And what we also need is a suit, a determination of suitability. And as, as Barbara will tell you, this district is one of those funny things. And what I meant is actually the property, and you can see from the elevation lines, isn't subject to flooding, but, you know, that whole side of the road is in it. So we're going to demonstrate that we should get, we, the determination of suitability, we meet that. But the simple fact is, any of the work on either of these buildings we're contemplating is in Zone X, it's not in the flood elevation. And even the revised flood elevations are far away from this. This is a 13-acre parcel. You, the, the plan you have only shows a small portion of it. And the reason for that is the first Herring Brook is back beyond the fences in the property. And so that, that's where, you know, where any, the flood zone comes into play. In addition to, if we're granted the, the relief that we're seeking from this board, in addition to that, we're also going to get whatever applicable permits are necessary from both the Conservation Commission and from the Planning Board. So this is our, this is our first stop. So at that, and I think, I think Ralph's a little bit under, under the weather here. I don't know if the board, if the plans of Barbara, if you, if you want to, on the plan, in a nutshell, you can see where the auto body shop is and where the addition to it is approximately 1,500 square foot addition. And in addition to that, you also see in there's a rendering there of the vehicle storage building is basically behind, and you, and you have the rendering of this. And Lawrence, if you want, if you want to, okay, Barbara. And we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about any variations or changes in parking, in traffic patterns or anything else. And one of the things which I, I believe you have in your, in your filings is, there is both letters of comment in saying they don't have any issues from both the fire chief and the police chief relating to this site and imposing, imposing.
Okay, so, yeah, Barbara Thocell for the record. What we have here on this plan is a colored up line, this point two, that's, that's the FEMA flood line right here, well in the back of the property. The proposed addition to the building is right here, right off of this building, that's actually on a paved area. And this is the proposed building that Bill's speaking of mostly. Storm order that we've decided to settle with on this project, because it's obviously very high groundwater, is actually to remove a portion of the pavement that's closer to the wetlands so that the net increase in flow from the site would be mitigated through removal of impervious surface area. Again, what Bill's talking about regarding zoning is this is the watershed protection district determined by the constituent zoning map, elevation 30, quite a distance from the FEMA map, which, which is fairly new, 2012. So I, I think that would be why, one of the stronger arguments is that this is pretty decent information that we're dealing with here. And all the proposed work is, is well beyond that elevation.
How many, how many feet from it?
Forty, I'd like.
That's going to be how many, like, feet away?
Are you saying where the, the proposed addition for the one, for the garage, there's already a slab there and you're just going to?
There's already impervious surface of both areas.
Well, this is all paved.
Right.
But this one is not.
Okay.
It's been paved. It's been paved for 60 years.
Exactly.
It was in, it was in old junkyard.
So in essence, I, I, well, I don't mean to ask Barbara this question, she can answer it, I'm going to have Lawrence show you the building. Lawrence, if you want to put that up. In essence, that's, that's a rendering from First Parish Road. And as you're probably aware, one of the things under the other thing, there is evergreen buffering and there's a substantial fence that's up there to try to buffer this from First Parish Road. And, you know, this building will accommodate the ability to get the oil trucks and other vehicles off, you know, off of the site into the property. One, one of the other issues is under, not this handed there, there's a, there's a small existing barn on the property on the, on the east side. And one of the things, the, one of the initial intention was from, from the oil company was to try to get these, to get some of the trucks in there, but structurally, they had to raise it and they couldn't raise it. And so this would, that's one thing that is undone. Would permit all these vehicles to get them undercover.
Is this just intended to be a storage or is there going to be work going on in the big building?
Inside the building? There'd be vehicle repairs and things along those lines, particularly with all this brutal weather we've had lately is, you know, hydraulics and I don't pretend to be a mechanic, but you just can't do the work. As a matter of fact, there were some, there were some calls and some other things that were, just in this past month that were necessary, that the vehicles could not perform and they had to, they had to get off-site repairs and other things done because, you know, you can't get the vehicles moving. One of the other things is, you know, hey, idling trucks on cold days, this actually gets it inside, so it's a, it's a noise buffer also.
This for work on existing vehicles?
Say again?
Work on is existing vehicles that are on the property, not?
Correct.
And what's the height of the proposed large building?
Thirty-two feet.
And one of those, I know there's trees on there that have been growing for a few years. How, how high are they now and how high are they going to get?
There's a fence down here that's six feet high. These vary in height. There's some, some evergreens. To be honest with you, I don't, I don't know how tall they will ultimately be. There are some, some deciduous trees here as well, so. There are some deciduous trees here as well, so it's kind of a seasonal thing as to how much you will actually see of the roof.
Could I just add there as well, that the building is set lower on the property, six feet lower than the street, so maybe the building's 32, but it's actually a 26-foot, you know, visual.
You can actually see from the side elevation on the plan?
Oh, okay, yeah.
So this is a view from here, that was the street, in other words, on the side well. So that's, again, depending on the season, is essentially what you would say.
Do the vehicles are going to go all the way around the other buildings to get access?
Yeah, they'll, how they go in, existing, Frank, they go in by like between the gas station and the auto body repair, that's where the opening is, in the stockade fence that's there.
And how many buildings, I mean, how many trucks can, the oil trucks can get in that building?
Well, there would be six overhead doors, you know, it would depend on the length of the truck.
Yeah, all the oil trucks in can fit in the building.
I don't know how many oil trucks there are. I mean, I'm asking, how many are there? All could be six?
It was a little form, but why don't you say, this could definitely accommodate, because in addition to that, it can also accommodate not only oil trucks, but also the ancillary vehicles that are used for, you know, in vans, used for repairs and, you know, maintenance and all those things.
All related to the oil business?
Correct, yes.
But in a larger sense, this property may not, this building was built, the property may go to another use, not necessarily an oil truck, you know, it could be, you know, a small truck vehicle repair, you know. All of this is allowed within the pre-existing uses. And I think the question that I would get to would be, what did we decide in 2004? And I recall being here, but I really don't recall all the details.
Yeah, I have the decision here.
But I think it had, we had, went through a great deal of discussions, what pre-existing uses were.
Yeah, it was hours of operation, there's, you know.
And I know that some things have been done that have been, that were requested at that time, the berm was put in, the trees were planted, we were just talking about that had been growing and other things.
Just a quick snippet of not all inclusive, but the existing legal non-conforming uses, per the decision of June 3, 2004, are things where car dealership, auto body repair, motor vehicle repair shop, service station with motor vehicle repair, inspection station, storage buildings, towing service, exterior motor vehicle parking, exterior junk storage consisting of assorted vehicles and parts. That was, that's not all of it, but that's.
I think at that time also, there was even a continuing, yeah, a Class A junkyard license, which would allow a shearing machine to be in there and other equipment. So, I mean, this parcel has a long history of industrial-type usage, stuff that we would not even entertain. And the applicant was before us in 2004, and agreed to limit use to, and I think we defined it in the decision, I didn't review the decision, but.
Yeah, there are hours of operation for the various things, there are certain restrictions. And we're not asking today to change any of these uses, all we're simply doing is asking that two of these uses, namely the auto body repair element of it, and the truck storage that we allow to be, put them under a roof, that's what we're looking to do.
Is the auto body, isn't there a Quonset hut kind of thingy there?
Yeah, that's the 1,500 square foot building that they're putting the addition on.
Correct.
Okay, is that whole building getting changed, or Quonset hut?
Yeah, is Mark here?
That's the Quonset unit.
Yeah, Mark, Mark Farciano right here.
Hi. The Quonset hut is my office.
Okay.
The shop is, if you're facing the Quonset hut, the shop is to the left of that. That's the 1,500 square foot building.
This is the Quonset, that one.
That's the Quonset, okay. So this is going to double your space essentially?
Correct.
Okay, and is it, are you going to double the bays too, or how do you?
Well, it would be three bays, the way that the, the way the floor plan is set up, there would be three garage doors on the backside of the property, which is on the other side of the fence.
Okay. What do you mean, the other side of the fence?
There's a fence there that bisects the.
Oh, okay, got it.
You would have to actually drive through the fence to go around to it.
Okay, and you'd be able to pull straight in to the back of the building?
Be able to pull straight in, back in and pull in.
Where do you get your car fixed?
My, no, I'm just kidding.
This is, I bring this up only because it's, I think this is the third time we've had the hearing for needing to make changes on this property. The first one that I recall was when the state changed the inspection procedures, and they needed to add an inspection bay that had.
Those were long enough to meet the requirement.
Long enough to meet the requirements, and it went in behind the existing gas station service shop. These kind of building changes would seem to me to be customary and usual, as technology changes, as requirements change for equipment. I almost want to say, why are you here? But I think it's so that we all know what's going on there, and we know why it's going on there. And we can use this as an opportunity, and I think maybe the neighbors, if they're the neighbors here, may use it as an opportunity to say, have we met some of those requirements that were in the 2004? And the decision, because we were very clear on, at that time, that we needed to try to make this a friendly neighbor.
Yes.
And that's.
That'll probably be good to get, no offense to the trucks, but get them off the, you know, probably look better. Be nicer than the neighborhood.
Trucks will be happier too.
Trucks will be happier, especially the people who have to work on them, who will be very happy. So there'll be no exterior storage of these, for these vehicles anymore then?
Before, well, there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be any exterior overnight storage of them, because, you know, sometimes there's trucks coming and going in there.
Oh, sure.
Overnight, yes.
Yeah, the trucks will be inside overnight, yes.
Okay. And then the determination of suitability, that's under?
470.
470?
Yep. And as Barbara said, the, this district has a, you know, a 30 elevation, and the FEMA elevation's 22, which we've shown on the plan, which is way far away of that. And the determination is if the property in effect is not subject to flooding, and by the old federal maps, it's not. It's one of those things, just like when you look at the flood, the floodplain and the watershed protection district, it was really a political district, because as you notice, for instance, all of Situate Harbor is not included in it, which is all subject to flooding. So it's kind of one of these ironic things.
It is.
So that's exactly why there's a determination of suitability in acknowledgement that this isn't, you know, isn't exact.
We don't have overwash?
No, not here.
Okay, all right. Does the board have any questions?
Well, actually, just a quick, what material they're going to be using for the building? Asphalt roof, similar to what you have on some of the other buildings now?
Well, actually, we're anticipating that it would be a metal roof, because there's, because of the pitch, actually, the pitch of the roof would not be suitable for asphalt shingles, because it is a low pitch.
And the idea of the low pitch is to keep the height of the building down?
Keep the height down, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and you have to have the height of it to be able to get the vehicles in, get the overhead doors in.
Are they 12 or 16-foot doors that they're going to?
14-foot.
14, okay.
Neil?
So if we wanted to condition an asphalt roof, we'd probably see the.
Yeah, I mean, I think the building's a low profile, and, I mean, I think there's a lot to be said for the trucks undercover, and it's a low profile, and I mean, appears to be sufficient screening.
Yeah.
And I think on the auto body, my understanding is work going on outside, which is, you know, it seems it's probably necessary.
Any of the audience wish to be heard?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jen Gagan, this is from Combs Street, across the street. I guess my biggest question for the neighbors would be, based on the 2004 rulings, why some of the corrections and things that were talked about back then haven't been followed through on? I know we've sent you all some letters in the past when some of these pieces have come up, and then, you know, it's never gotten to a meeting. How are we adapting and changing if we haven't kind of finalized what was set forth to begin with?
Could I address that?
Yes, you please.
I have met with the neighbors, I think for about an hour, explained the procedure. We do not have the resources to monitor what's going on behind there, there's just too, too much to do. We are going to town meeting to try to get another building inspector. If they feel that something is in violation, they need to write me. I have 14 days to respond, and I will take care of it. And the last time I was down there, there was some metal that, you know, had removed, and I think there was some food containers, they're gone. And there's an understanding that the red barn that was there, it was impraticable to pick it up, and I think there's a boat that was supposed to be moved that's sitting there, and it's currently for sale, and, you know, hopefully gets sold quickly. But I don't know of any other outstanding violations, and I haven't heard any tonight. But I would prefer to hear them in a letter, you know, if that's, that is the procedure. The procedure is not to come before the zoning board appeals, before actions requested from me. It has not been formally requested.
So do you understand what you said?
I totally understand, because I'm one of the people that met with Neil back around Thanksgiving time, and at that time, as part of the conversation, actually, we talked about the fact that things like the boat were going to be gone. And he did draft a letter on December 13, 2004, in response to the neighbors, that does talk about the commercial fishing vessel that it did need to go and would be removed by July 1, 2004. So it's 2014.
2014?
Yeah, July 1, 2004.
Okay.
It's 2014.
But procedurally, tonight, we are here for a very specific thing, and that's for the expansion of the building and the proposed, you know, storage of the building. If there are issues that, you know, the owner of the property has not complied with prior orders, then that, there's a process by which you do that.
Right, we understand the process.
Right, right.
But we also understand from Neil at that meeting that he, as part of that process, he has tickets that no longer work in town.
That's correct.
So it's kind of an interesting process, and I guess the primary concern is, the neighbors aren't necessarily against the changes and improvements, but I guess that we want to know that they are for the continued betterment of the area. I mean, as part of that discussion as well, that we had, Neil pointed out to us that he recalls as part of the original agreement, that the grass man, who also is one of the businesses there in front of the red barn, was not necessarily supposed to have signage and things in the front there, yet that's where they parked their trucks. We were under the impression they were supposed to be parked in the back. So they're parked in the front with the signs all over them, and as of late, about the past month and a half or so, there's also what appears to be a junked car out there that's just sitting out in the front. I mean, I guess if you're saying that we need to go and put these things in writing, that's fine, but I'm wondering.
I actually have a suggestion. I think this permit can be conditioned. The problem with the trucks, with their big signs out front, there was no provision in the, because I've combed through it, and it, they basically said no working on lawnmowers out in the front, they didn't restrict the trucks out front. But I, you know, I think it's, to me, would be a reasonable condition that these big trucks with their signs not be out front. And I think another reasonable condition would be, before building permit is issued, that boat gets moved.
Can I say something?
First of all, all right, you know, you just have to raise your hand, and then tell us, tell us who you are.
Charles Harris.
Okay.
The boat belonged to my son, Charles Harris, passed away. I'm trying to sell the boat. If anybody knows, commercial fishermen cannot sell your boat, you can't give them away now. So I've been trying to sell it, okay? Now, this is a fishing community, isn't it? There's a lot of boats in yachts. I mean, what's the big, does the boat look that bad? You know, she's worried about the boat?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, all right, all right, first of all.
One of these ladies.
All right, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris.
Please.
I need to, I'll solve this problem.
Okay.
All right, Chuck, first of all, Jen will tell you what I told the neighbors, I think it's the prettiest thing in the yacht, because I love boats. And I, the other suggestion I had was that we modify the decision to, you know, the boat's for sale, and instead of having a condition in there, and I do, I'm going to say, what is so awful about that boat there, with everything else in there? That the board modify the condition, say the boat can stay there until it's sold. You know, that worked fine for me, too. Either way, we've got a condition that's in a special permit, and these folks come to me, and they deserve to have these things enforced. And, you know, it's frustrating to me also, so, one way or the other, you know, I think it needs to be addressed.
Well, we're not here to, we haven't been asked to modify the permit, that's the problem.
Right, exactly.
And so I don't know how we can do that tonight.
Yeah, so you condition, you put a condition in it.
Well, I think we can, I think we're being asked to have a finding that this is an acceptable next step for the property. And we had a decision in 2004 where we basically did the same kind of things. And to be completely fair, a lot of stuff that was asked for in that decision was followed through. I mean, the berm, the trees, the fence, the, it's an improvement. Question of boats, I can see a future request to use this property as for boat storage. At some, I'm not, I'm not saying from this applicant, but I'm recognizing that with more and more waterfront property disappearing for boats to be stored in the winter, I'm seeing more boats being stored in places like this. I teach in Marshfield, and right next door to me is a large boat storage yard, Sims Boats. And it's not, it's not terribly unattractive, and it is 139, and it's a whole lot different from First Parish. But it's, what we're talking about here is, the board has a right to condition things, and the applicant has a right and a responsibility to be a good neighbor. But as I said in 2004, we can't put a use, we can't condemn the use of a space that's been used in this fashion for a long time, based on the fact that there are new people who live in the neighborhood. I mean, you bought the house, I'm assuming, because I don't think you're old enough to have bought the house before Paul Youngs was there and before the junkyard was there. So it was, with some fashion or another, there's been a commercial use there. I'm concerned when we're talking about telling trucks they can't park off the street because they have signs on them. I mean, it's, this is what this property's been used for. And if we're going to live in a town where we condemn the use of any kind of commercial trucks being parked, we're not going to have any services. That's part of the nature of being a good neighbor. It should be done in a clean way, it should be done in a proper way. We should look to have property owners maintain the property at the highest and best level. I can say that property has been improved a great deal since 2004. I know the, at that time, I think, I don't even know that there was an active car dealership in there. There was a, it was kind of a much more quasi-deal. Now I see a paved, a paved way with cars that are for sale, lined up and clean and brushed off of the snow every day, you know. It seems to me to be, have improved, and I just don't want to lose sight of that. I'm not suggesting that you don't still have some concerns, but I know Neil has also, goes out of his way to make sure that concerns he hears from people in the formal process are addressed. He responds. Sometimes they make it to us for, to appeal his decision, but we've got a very good working relationship in our town, and Mr. Harris, please don't, let's keep this civil, okay?
If I could just make another comment, just, I think, give you a little historical perspective. The initial concerns. The initial concerns when this came to a head in 2004 was that the fishing trucks and vehicles in there and the fishing business going in there, and the neighbors were concerned about, you know, orders and everything else. And I think the board, you know, basically, okay, we're just going to ban all fishing. And I think, I don't know if, and I mean, I do. I look at the boat, and I look a lot of trucks, and I say, you know, I like boats. So I thought maybe, you know, it would be a simple thing to do to modify, and I know that didn't come before the board tonight, but that would, that would have been my solution. And it is for sale. I mean, there's nobody using it, it's for sale.
Is it only one boat?
Just one boat.
Okay.
It looks like it's freshly painted.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jen Gagin, 65 Common Street. I think I unfortunately misunderstood what we were trying to say. It's really not so much that there's one boat back there. It's what the boat represents, because based on the ruling from 2004, there were nine set uses for that area. Yes, of course, we knew that it was commercial, and of course, I knew that when I moved in. And it has improved in many, many ways, but as I'm saying, what we're saying is, is that based on those nine, boats back there is not part of that. And the idea that if things like that are overlooked, if now we're going to put in a 7,000-square-foot building, we hope that it's used the way that it's being represented tonight and intended, and that it's not, you know, that it doesn't lead to using it in some other type of fashion. That's all that we're asking you for. As I said, we're not saying that we're not for the continued improvements, and it's not about nitpicking over one boat. It's more what it represents based on the original finding.
And I appreciate that. And I remember reading it, and I remember, you know, in November, reading the concerns and, you know, recognizing that it sounded like you had some pretty valid concerns, but even back then, realizing that the process to go through that is to, you know, ask Neil for enforcement of that order, and then if that doesn't happen, then come to us. But right now, this is, this is before us, just with respect to these two issues. I would have no problem conditioning, you know, vehicles with, you know, signage. I don't think that that lot needs to be, you know, rolling advertising. There's a big space with a, with a, with a, you know, fence that vehicles with, you know, marked vehicles or whatever you want to call it, could, you know, don't need to be kept, you know, on the street. At the same time, I see a boat that's for sale under, you know, pretty tragic circumstances. I'm sure Mr. Harris would be very, you know, as hard as it is to, it would be good to have that boat resolved, and I would hope that, you know, out of the kindness and, you know, consideration of the circumstances, that we can overlook the boat and, and hope that it someday is, you know, finds an owner to take care of it. But, so I, I'm not certainly for conditioning a permit on the removal of the boat. And if you want to take that up with Neil, then on a more formal basis, which I get the impression that that particular issue is probably not the big one, then that's the way it needs to go, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm concerned about conditioning any, conditioning anything that creates a hardship where a 7,000-square-foot structure is going to be built, and then conditioning it so that it can only be used for one thing and one thing only and forever and in perpetuity. And I'm particularly concerned because of, you know, I think maybe that 2004 decision we, and I participated in it, we added more to it than should have been in a finding of the zoning board.
Maybe it needs to be, maybe the applicant wants to amend it.
But that, right, I'm forgetting that. But this is, I think this is very simple. Does that building offer, does it create substantial detriment to the neighborhood? I think it actually improves it. It improves the ability to use the property in a way that is historic, consistent, and unchanged over the, it's actually been reduced, the intensity. It doesn't impact the water supply. It doesn't... I, I'm in favor of the improvements that they're proposing.
What about a condition about no commercial vehicles on, I don't know how we'd phrase it exactly.
Yeah, I think that might be a little more slippery slope than we're there, because you get vans now with more than six square feet of signage on them. Any, now you get murals on the side of trucks or vans that, or cars, for that matter, that have murals that are, you know, advertising, or they're parked out there.
Well, are they on any regular basis? I mean, I think they can't be, well, they shouldn't be stored there.
But by rights, they could put a big sign on the property.
I'm going to, I just want, I actually think this is an expansion on nonconforming use, what has gone on with the landscaping trucks. And I could make that call, but I think we're here in front of the board.
Oh, there you go. Now that's done?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the only issue, is the landscape, Mr. Green?
Well, you know, it's, the sign is glaring, and I'm not sure if I have jurisdiction to cite a sign that's on a vehicle. I think some talk that registry of motor vehicles doesn't allow that. But I do think it's an expansion. And I think it's, I think, I don't know, it's, the, I think this is an appropriate time to bring it up and condition. I think it should have been done in the first place, because that was the intent, as was the intent not to have a fishing business there, and I think they comped the boat in with it, and, you know, just, I mean, we have boats that big in people's backyards, frankly.
Right, right.
So anyway, I don't want to confuse the issue, but that would be my request.
Okay.
Anne Finney, 56 Common Street. And like Jen has said, the boat is not the issue. The trucks with the sign on them are not the issue. We've been down, we've met with Sean, he showed us around that backyard, he was very helpful. He also, at that time, said he was not going to go ahead with this extra building, which was just last fall. We talked about expanding the auto body. We had no problem with that. At that point, we were told that that building was not on the table at this point, and now all of a sudden, here it is. It also was a little disconcerting to get them and say, see that it's Alan, Ryan Allen. Oh, okay, well, it's probably Sean Harris. It's 126 First Parish Road. It felt like something was trying to be slipped in, but whatever. Our concern as the neighbors is that the rules have not been followed. The things that were put out in this 2004 letter and so forth, I wasn't even back living there then, but the rules haven't been followed, the things haven't, some things haven't cleaned up. It looks really good. There's a lot of things that we really are very happy about, but our concern is, if the rules aren't being followed now, what's to ensure us that they're going to be followed in the future as this thing grows? And we got another mess up the other end of our street at Stockbridge Road that turned into a nightmare of stuff happening back there that nobody's keeping track of what's going on back there. We don't want the same thing to happen at the bottom of the street. I know that's a different situation, but we have no confidence that the rules are going to be enforced. That's the biggest concern, I think, of most of the neighbors as we're talking about.
Just to address this, you know, I want to say, what rule, and I do really want to bring this in, but there, I have been over there, there's no, there's no major violations. It's the boat, the barn, and occasional, you know, oil tank that, you know, Sean gets rid of right away.
Okay, but that's three violations of things that are supposed to be taken care of.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me. You have to let Mr. Duggan answer. He's talking, and then we will recognize you and you can...
I've explained my dilemma with the boat. The red barn, it just was not going to happen. Sean has been talking about coming in front of this board for years, and I keep saying, okay, I mean, what are you going to do? Take a beautiful antique barn and, you know, just, I mean, I think that's an attractive building at that site, and I personally think if he had elevated and turned it to a commercial barn, it would have detracted from the site. So finally, he's here, and I think we're addressing it. That's being addressed. I made my, I think, case pretty clear on the boat, and what else is there substantively that's not being enforced? And keeping in mind, there's one of me.
And let's keep in mind that this is not an enforcement hearing. If you, if there are issues that aren't being enforced from the 2004 hearing, 2004 decision, then there is the process that you have to request enforcement in writing. Mr. Duggan has four, 14 days to respond, and if he doesn't do it, then you get to come in front of us, and then we will, we will resolve it. But, you know, and we're not putting you off. It's just this, it's just the, that's the process. You know, these are the issues that are before us today. The other ones can't. You know, we can't make, we can't, we today, tonight, cannot, you know, change how, change what's going on with, with what's presently that you believe is improper. And the issue with respect to the name, it's, this is the proper name. The, you know, Sean Harris is, was, he's not the owner of the property. Ryan Allen is the proper owner.
And it's always been, like, I think, you know, on behalf of the attorney, it takes some umbrage to that. Ryan Allen is one of the deceased members of the, who died tragically of the Harris family, and it was in, you know, it was in the honor of that that it was named that. But Sean Harris has never been the owner of this property. Sean simply, if you know what a limited liability company is, certainly, is simply the manager, the person who's in charge of certain ministerial duties. But in the overall thing, just, you know, just from our standpoint, closing is, it's a lot of very positive things that have happened here. This is a necessary, there's a lot of local residents and businessmen and ladies who operate their businesses here. Several of them were displaced by the MBTA. And there's a lot of good things, and yes, are there a few warts and pimples here that need to be addressed? Yes, we'll continue to do that, but I don't want to, all of the good things and the improvements we're doing, I don't want this to cast a shadow over it. Those are all things. There's a proper mechanism that something's that, if something's that important, then it's a mechanism to deal with that. Always, Harris family is always open to talk and to try to be good neighbors. I said, one of the things going way back to 2004 is, hey, the post office who's owned there, the post office isn't, isn't subject to any regulations, being a federal thing. You know, they could have trucks backing up at 2:00 AM in the morning. You know, we're subject to all kinds of hourly operation regulations, which is all good, because that's what we want to do, to be a good neighbor. That's all.
Mr. O.
Yeah, let me chip on from that. Let me agree with that. This is probably one of the most conditioned decisions that came out of the board. In my spare time, I was also on the ZBA, and we agonized over a lot of it. We worked out through with the neighbors. We all envisioned what this could have been. And we came back up and we put the fencing up, we put the trees and everything else to come back up and to do it, and we took our best shot at coming back up and defining conditions that would basically integrate that into the neighborhood as best we could. But recognizing, as Bill just said, it's a business. It's a collection of business. And you go back to what Ben said, I mean, you've got to do what you can to support the businesses, and I think to put conditions on this that would say restricted for, you know, oil truck use only or something like that, I think is going far beyond what I think is, needs to be done on it. And I think if there are issues, unlike, I guess, I have to agree also with Neil, is the fact that I've never met a boat that I didn't like. My wife will verify that I've got a couple in my yard just because of it. But as I say, I think you come back up and you've got to look and step back and put a little common sense as to what, what it is and recognize what the site is, and you go from there, so. Thank you.
I think it should be a huge improvement, having the build, the vehicles in a closed building.
Right.
I think the, didn't the last permit, I don't have it in front of me, did you restrict from overnight storage outside last time?
Restrict what? No.
No?
There was, basically, the whole property was outside of storage.
Yes.
What we were, what we were trying to do last time, as much as anything, was to take the shadow of a continued use as a junkyard off the table. I mean, that was, was a big concern.
Yeah.
I thought there were some limitations on how many trucks could be parked outside overnight or something. Am I...
No, the intention was to take the activity that's on the site and basically look to move as much as we could behind the fence.
Right.
Well, and that's where I think it'd be good to keep it.
Right.
Yeah, I just think this is an opportunity to improve the site. We've got, you know, even the auto body shop, you've got three bays, you're putting the storage from outside to inside. Instead of tarping vehicles and stuff that you have to do it out or run this business, you can put them all inside, again, behind the stockade fence out of sight that helped to clean up the site. Then, again, just adding of the bays, the noise factor, the vehicles being inside, being worked on, started up, that's going to keep things, again, it's behind the berm low, and I think, I think they're all good improvements.
Anything else from any of the members of the board? Any, anything else from any of the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Finney, 56 Common Street. I just want to say again, at the risk of repeating, that the neighbors are not the ones who are asking for any of the restrictions or conditions or whatever. That wasn't what we're about.
Yep.
We're just concerned about what's not been done that's been requested and how that could get out of control in the future. We're not necessarily opposed to the building, the expansion of the auto body or the new building. It's the other stuff, the junk and all that, that's still back there, and I'm still not convinced that there's not a threat to the water supply back there with all the deteriorating trucks and whatever's coming out of them, but I just want to make it clear that we're not the ones who are even asking for those restrictions.
I know Mr. Duggan did. Anybody entertaining Mr. Duggan's restrictions? No?
No. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
No, I think it's probably, I mean, my view, it's a different, a different forum. We should address that issue.
Sure, that's fine. I don't disagree.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have a motion? We've had one for each of us tonight.
That doesn't count as being overturned either.
The record still stands.
I'm just trying, I, frankly, it's one of those things, I've been, I've been concerned about why we're even here, because I don't think we're actually authorizing to, looking to authorize any changes of nonconforming. We're looking to...
We're extending it, sure.
I'm not even sure you're extending it. You're just, you're putting a building...
Expansion, nonconforming use.
Absolutely.
Oh, could you put a building on it? To continue to do what you're already doing?
Absolutely.
Move to the board finds that the proposed new buildings on the site are not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and are inappropriate expansion of the nonconforming use as previously decided by this board in 2004. I want to refer to the plan. The buildings as, as proposed on the plan dated, dated February 25th, 2014, no revisions, by M.R. Surveying, Inc.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second vote on the, under section 470.9 on determination suitability.
Suitability of the use?
No, no, is, in other words, to say that the, that the land...
Oh, because of the floodplain.
Yeah, it's not, because of the floodplain and watershed protection district that the, that the proposed use is appropriate and that the property is not subject to flooding.
Move to find that under 470.9, the use is appropriate in the floodplain and watershed protection district, and the property is not subject to flooding.
And not unsuitable because of drainage conditions.
We have to list the conditions, so that's what we take care of.
It'll be in the decision.
Removal of the pavement.
Well, that's, yeah.
That's in the plan.
Yeah, that's on the plan, and that's going to be, we'll condition that, because we're going to go to the Conservation Commission. If they want, we'll deal with whatever it is.
Okay. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Attorney Orenberg.
Huh?
Can you draft the proposal?
Yes, we'll draft the proposal.
You're just going to go back and make Jeff write him.
I hope so.
He's much more eloquent than I thought.
Delegate, are you delegating that?
Delegate, delegate, and delegate again.
Not as bad as when they first...
I hope so.
He's much more eloquent than I am.
Delegate, are you delegating it?
Delegate, delegate and delegate again.
Not as bad as when they first-
Okay. Move to adjourn?
Good job.
Some move, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everyone.